I'd like to reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council Public Finance Authority. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick?
Here.
Councilmember Mosher?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vandermark?
Here.
Mayor Strickland?
Here.
Councilmember McKeon?
Here.
Councilmember Bolton?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
All present.
So, please rise. The pledge allegiance will be led today by Councilwoman Rhonda Bolton.
Please stand as you're able. Ready for getting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today the invocation will be done by Huntington Beach Police Chaplain James Pike.
Let us pray. We pray for our republic, dear God, for its institutions and its people, that we keep at our heart the evident truth that we are all made equal. We pray for our city, for these leaders, for the servants of the city, and for its citizens. May your providence look kindly upon us, and may it look kindly upon this meeting tonight, all the business that will be transacted, and the words that are shared. And finally, we pray, send your spirit upon us, that friends may not be separated, that enemies may be reconciled, and we pray this in your name. Amen.
Members going down the agenda, closed session report by City Attorney. City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, one item, Mayor, thank you, from closed session. City Council voted 7-0 to support the amicus effort by the League of Cities in the case Ohio House LLC versus City of Costa Mesa, Ninth Circuit, Court Case Number 22-56181. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, we do, Mayor. My notes here. For consent calendar, item five, a memo was received from myself regarding some revisions to both the August 1st and September 5th regular meeting minutes, but I'd like to say that I've been asked to make another revision to the August 1st meeting minutes, and I'm not prepared to do that tonight, so I'm gonna go ahead and pull that off the agenda when you vote. Okay?
Okay.
For consent, item seven, three email communications regarding the adoption of ordinances to amend the HBMC to streamline, consolidate, and dissolve a select number of city boards, commissions, and committees, and council committees. For item number eight, four email communications regarding acceptance of 325,000 in grant funds from the California Department of Cannabis Control to assist in the development of a cannabis retail access program. For consent calendar, item 12, an email received regarding adoption of emergency ordinance number 4304, amending the municipal code, Chapter 10.84 relating to bike regulations. For administrative items, number 14, an email communication regarding the adoption of resolution number 2023-46, adopting the 2023 through 2027 strategic plan. And for administrative items, number 15, eight email communications received regarding adoption of resolution number 2023-48, declaring the city a no-mask and no-vaccine mandate city.
Thank you. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
We have 31 signed up to speak. I'm gonna call in groups of 10. Please come down and approach both podiums. Luann Shoup, Barbara Shapiro, Buzz McCord, Nora Peterson, Shammy D., Kathy Carrick, Pat Goodman, Meg Robinson, Libby, and Mary Jo Berettish.
So at this time, the City Council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment may do so in person by filling out a request-to-speak form delivered to the City Clerk. All speakers are encouraged, but not required, to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with council members on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the City Clerk's administrative assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire City Council at city.council@surfcity-hb.org. Thank you so much for being here. Who would like to open?
Thank you. My name is Luann Nichols Shoup, and I have a wonderful announcement for everybody in Huntington Beach. This Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Huntington Beach Central Park, right behind the library, is going to be the Surf City Arts Fest and Family Arts Day. They are going to have unique hand-on art projects for kids of all ages, food vendors, live music, and dance performances. There will be artists who will be displaying their original art, and of course, there will be some homemade jewelry for those ladies who can never have too much jewelry. I took my three-year-old granddaughter to this about four years ago, and I could not get her to leave. She was having so much fun at the art table. So, anybody here who has grandchildren or kids, it's a great family event, and it's free. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker?
Hi.
Thank you.
I'm Shammy D., and I thought I'd like to talk about the airshow for a bit today. Specifically, I'm referring to the economic impact that was put together as a brochure by the council majority, and it's incredibly misleading. Is there a slide? Next slide. This particular slide is the one I'd like to focus on most. It talks here about income that the city would get from the airshow, and it says it's 3.7 million. But what I want to point out is that 2 million of that 3.7 million is future property tax. Future property tax. Not real revenue. And then you look, and there's another 700,000 in there. That's supposed to be from hotel TOT tax. But it turns out that we don't have enough hotel rooms that we could ever accommodate that. When we asked the author of the brochure, he said, "Well, that's for hotels in the area, not hotels in Huntington Beach." Turns out, only 10% of the hotel nights are actually in Huntington Beach, and those are the ones we would get TOT for. Another thing in this bogus 3.7 million dollar number is that it includes tax, sales tax, and one of the biggest, in fact, almost 40% of the money that the average person spends when they come to the airshow is on the airshow ticket, which is not taxable. So, it turns out that this isn't 3.7 million dollars to the city. It's more like a million, maybe. Next slide. And then spending at the airshow. The statistics show that the average party of 3.8 people spends $407 for openers. 155 of that goes directly to the airshow for a ticket. That money's not taxable, and it's not money that's spent locally in the community. When you go after that, then you gotta assume that PA is gonna get about half of all the food sales, merchandise sales, and I don't know how much they get of the parking. So, at the end of the day, there's probably only about $160 of that $407 that really goes to local HB businesses. The rest of it, one way or another, goes to Pacific Airshow. Now, the total economic impact, I keep hearing this total economic impact of 120 million dollars. That's just nuts. First of all, that number is based on a proprietary, secret formula that this company uses to inflate the numbers that they have.
10 seconds.
This bigger number. And it's based on inaccurate data, and it really just talks about circular economics.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. I'm a Huntington Beach homeowner. Tony Strickland doesn't listen to public comments of what he calls "the other side." I have heard video of him admiring his, admitting his city council position is nothing more than an opportunity to further the conservative movement. He says, "By the way, we'll win anyway." Gates, we have video of you sucking up to Trump last Saturday like a lovesick puppy, robbing for a job in his imaginary next term. You told Trump you were putting voter ID on the ballot. You weren't even on the city council. You're admitting this is all a secret agreement between you and four council members? I think someone needs to educate Gates, Tony, and his three toadies about the Brown Act. Be careful what you wish for, because there's video of this all over the internet. Here's a news article from the AP entitled "There's No Sign of Widespread COVID-19 Mandates in the U.S. It's All a Big Show to Pledge Their Loyalty to the MAGA Cult." Trump Decided to Vilify Mask Because It Messed Up His Face Bronzer. This mask-vaccine resolution is a red herring. We may as well be debating a resolution to allow space aliens to park on public property, because neither is going to happen. This absolute garbage resolution was written by someone with zero medical training or knowledge. Can one of you tell me the difference between droplet, fomite, and aerosol transmission? Can you tell me what an ACE2 receptor is? Explain how COVID attacks nerves and blood cells and blood vessels. You're city council members. You're not the Public Health Department. Does this mean you would outlaw a mask mandate in healthcare facilities where sick people and immunocompromised people intermingle? But I have two charter members I'd like to propose. Number one, if you've been involved in money laundering for political purposes, you are barred from city council. Number two, require a college education to be on city council, and a degree in medicine to be involved in any public health measures. Voter ID, book banning, disdain for the importance of human rights, false patriotism, government entwined with religion, mockery of science, rampant cronyism.
10 seconds.
Corruption, control over elections, marginalizing citizens over gender, gender identity are all hallmarks of fascism.
Thank you. Thanks so much for being here. Thank you. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
I'm Nora Peterson. I'm a 37-year resident of Huntington Beach. This week in America, it's a special week. This week is Banned Book Week. It is the week that strong, ethical, independent people celebrate the freedom to read. It is the time to be aware of current and historical attempts to censor books in libraries and schools. As the current titles targeted for censorship are by or about LGBTQ persons, and Black, Indigenous, and people of color, it's curious that four of our would-be censors come from our city council majority. Banning books closes off readers to people, places, and perspectives. It is not for city council members with no background in library science to silent voices that need to be heard and scenes that need to be seen. Let freedom read. Republican General Eisenhower became president when I was born. At his address at Dartmouth, he said, "Don't join the book burners. Don't be afraid to go to your city library. Read every book." This was a direct rebuff to Senator McCarthy. Then 11 books were taken from the Dartmouth Library and actually burned. Do we want Huntington Beach to return to the days of McCarthy? No. Reading develops strong, ethical, independent thinkers. America thrives with thinking people. No book restrictions, no changes to the city charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
I would like to provide council with some documents to replace rumors. I'll give these to the Sergeant-at-Arms when I'm done. First, there are two guys who spoke after me at one of the recent meetings, and I respect them for speaking. It takes some nerve. They said they hadn't seen even one published study about the FSK of masks. I've selected four peer-reviewed studies on masks and three on respiratory aerosols. This one predates COVID. It's from 2019. N95 respirators versus medical masks for preventing influenza among healthcare personnel. The list of author institutions is 20, and includes Johns Hopkins, University of Texas, Dallas, et cetera. Summary, the coronavirus does not fornicate. We replicate it inside our body cells. Every single variant started inside an individual. Masks help us to protect each other from sickness, and just as importantly, from starting new variants. Second, elections. The mayor doesn't trust Orange County elections, but he didn't provide evidence, so I checked. Caltech did a study that dissected the Orange County election of 2018 in minute nerdy detail, quoting from the summary, quote, "The administration and conduct of the 2018 primary and general elections in Orange County had high degree of integrity. Our analysis lends strong confidence that the county's election was without compromise." If you don't trust nerds, then the Conservative Heritage Foundation did a study of election fraud cases across the United States. I searched their database for California elections in 2020 and 2022. They listed 14 cases out of 28.9 million votes cast. They reported zero in Orange County. Fourth, people have made random accusations about Mayor Strickland. I wanted to know the facts. I did some digging and found the Fair Political Practices Commission Case Number 11073, 2018, quoting, and I apologize, I had to shorten this to make three minutes, quote, "It is stipulated and agreed that Strickland et al. violated the Political Reform Act purposely or negligently caused or aided and abetted three persons to make four earmarked over-the-limit contributions. This matter consists of eight counts of violating the Act." Later on, the judgment says, "The parties have prior enforcement history. Strickland was prosecuted in April 2010 by the commission. Laundering campaign contributions is one of the most serious violations of the Act. The party's conduct deceived the voting public as to the true sources of $65,000," end quote. As someone with a history of aversion to fair elections, I request Mayor Strickland remove himself from deliberations in voting about charter amendments changing our elections." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members, and Huntington Beach neighbors. My name is Kathy Carrick, and I am a 48-year resident of Huntington Beach. There is a lot of division right now in our community on a variety of issues, but there is one I think we could all unite on, and that is protecting the most vulnerable among us, our children. There is a discussion happening about removing pornographic materials from the children's section of the public library. One gentleman spoke from this podium recently mocking this discussion by intentionally trying to mislead listeners by describing the subject materials as being about menstruation. This is why we rarely have productive arguments anymore, because those defending one side of the argument always make things up that aren't true to sway the other side. This is shameful, but what we should do is arm ourselves with true facts before making our decisions. The materials we are talking about are not about menstruation, but rather about very explicit things, such as many forms of sexual intercourse, including oral sex. We, as parents and grandparents, have no bigger responsibility than to keep our children safe and secure. This includes not placing materials that are pornographic, harmful to young psyches, and go against the values we teach in our families within easy reach of their very own section in the library. It is not up to the government, it is not up to the schools, and it is not up to public librarians to decide when and how our children will be taught sexually explicit material. If you have a desire to have your eight-year-old view pictures of adults having sex, then by all means, take them to the adult section and let them check out books. But please, allow my family to protect the innocence of my eight-year-old grandchildren by not having these books on the shelves they browse on a regular basis. I commend Mayor Pro Tem Vandermark and the other city council members that support the removal of these materials from the children's section of the library. It is well-known that Ms. Vandermark has done extensive research and has attended many meetings, including traveling to Sacramento on more than one occasion, to learn about and support this issue. Thank you, Gracie, for caring so deeply about our children. I strongly support any future measures that seek to remove pornographic and sexually explicit materials from the children's section of the library. And let me add how horrified I am to see that our society has sunk to this level, that we even need to speak about these kinds of issues. If we are not all 100%
10 seconds.
in favor of protecting our innocent and vulnerable children, what kind of society are we? Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor Strickland and City Council members. My name is Mary Jo Berettish, a 40-year resident of Huntington Beach. Please stop this proposed tinkering with a local election and focus on voter ID. The Orange County Register of Voters already checks each ballot to verify the voter is legitimate and lives in the city. Required Huntington Beach to run air only in the election is unnecessary, too impractical, too costly, and too fraught with controversy, especially since Attorney General Robbanta has already told the city that asking for identification at the polling place is against California law. If Huntington Beach institutes a voter ID requirement, there will be legal challenges. Would its citizens do not need to pay for more lawsuits? Forcing this particular unnecessary charter amendment by you onto the public would destroy the trust and connection between our local government and a broader community. It is time for you to listen to the community. You do not need to lose their trust. Additionally, we simply do not have the resources or the expertise to carry it out, especially if the Orange County Register of Voters is not fully on board with this effort. We were also not provided with actionable evidence and data to justify the proposed changes in our election procedure. Show that evidence or pull your proposed amendment. Additionally, the lumping together of unrelated items in each of the proposed charter amendments on the ballot is unacceptable. It confuses the voters by forcing a yes or no vote on unrelated items. If any proposed amendments are going to appear on the ballot, then each proposed item should stand alone on the ballot to allow an up or down vote on each individual item. No bundling of unrelated items. In conclusion, I state that perhaps we citizens do need to get the assistance of an outside legal firm to construct a more needed legal analysis of all the proposed charter amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Meg Robinson, resident. A few meetings ago, the Mayor Pro Tem was highly insulted about being called a hypocrite. Since a hypocrite is a person who acts in contradiction to what they say they would do, there are five people up there who have done just that, made campaign statements and did the opposite. Statement, no change to the city charter. Action, are pushing ballot measures to change the city charter. Statement, it's time to involve residents and their local government to ensure they have a seat at the table so their voices are heard. Action, you disbanded standing citizen committees. Statement, government activities out in the open and not done in closed session through ad hoc committees. Your action, ad hoc committees were formed to decimate standing citizen committees and to write ballot charter changes. Statement, protect HB taxpayers. Actions, seeking to spend unknown amounts on charter changes, especially in regards to the elections. Hiding possible further cost of the airshow settlement, which has cost millions so far. Being willing to engage in costly legal battles with the state, increasing the size of the city attorney's office and his salary to do just that. With cost in mind, have you read the beginning of the city charter? We, the people of the city of Huntington Beach, State of California, believe fiscal responsibility and the prudent stewardship of public funds is essential for confidence in government, that ethics and integrity are the foundation of public trust, and just governance is built upon these values. I find it hard to trust people who say one thing and do another. Also, the charter assigns to the mayor the role of spokesperson for the city, so why was the city attorney speaking for the city, plugging the proposed charter amendments to the former president like a schoolboy wanting a gold star? The city's attorney's job is to deal with the city's legal matters, not to tout the proposed voter ID ballot measure as if he was a member of the city council. To paraphrase, "We are proposing voter ID." No, Mr. City Attorney, the city council is proposing it. You may claim you were attending as a private citizen, but I bet you were glad handing it as the Huntington Beach City Attorney. How can we trust your legal opinions on the ballot measures when you are so blatantly partisan about them in public? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Thursday will be the final meeting before the council decides to move forward with a giant waste of money putting charter amendments on the ballot. It is clear that the new majority is not skilled at governing and doesn't understand the most appropriate methods for implementing policy. Last week, Casey McKeon suggested that by changing the word "shall" to "may" in the proposed voter ID amendment, it would be a good way to test the policy. The charter is similar to a constitution, and it is meant to be very stable. Altering the charter to test an idea Altering the charter to test an idea is absurd. What if the test fails, and the charter has to be amended again to fix it? It will cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to put it on the ballot again. What if the voters don't vote in favor of fixing it? Many of the ideas, while I personally don't like them, would be more efficiently enacted via an ordinance and could be easily corrected if they don't work out as anticipated. That brings me to Tony's flagship issue, voter ID. Over the last several weeks, many people have cited the security of the Orange County elections. The county registrar's office has been awarded certification to the highest standards. Any lawsuits challenging elections have been dismissed. There have been no cases of voter fraud that affect the outcome. However, Tony tells us that he still hears from people who are concerned about the integrity of our elections. Instead of educating those people, he chooses to encourage their doubts and wants to spend millions of Huntington Beach dollars to have Huntington Beach run its own elections. He could simply ask those doubters if they trust that he was fairly elected. If they don't think so, maybe he should step down. He should and could explain to those doubters how the election system actually works in our county. If he doesn't know, he should make an appointment and tour the registrar's office and learn for himself. I would remind everyone that voter fraud carries a 10-year prison sentence. No matter how much I love a candidate, it is certainly not worth risking that kind of penalty in order to change one vote, which is likely not enough to change the outcome of the election. In conclusion, it is silly to spend taxpayer money trying to appease a handful of citizens who will never believe the outcome of an election is fair unless their candidate wins. What will they do if their candidate loses even if there is a voter ID requirement? In 2020, several states where Trump lost, there were voter ID laws, but there were still claims of fraud. The reality is that some people will believe the earth is flat, no matter how much proof you provide, because that's what they want to believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor Strickland, City Council members. My name is Pat Goodman. I have lived in Huntington Beach since 1976 and owned a home since 1978. I love this city, the parks, beaches, libraries, wetlands, events. I feel very connected to the community through my family, friends, volunteer activities, and involvement in the faith communities. There is a lot of natural beauty in this city, and it's great that the city is recognized as number two in ranking recently by the Orange County Register. This is quite an honor and one we don't want to squander. I am, however, greatly concerned that we don't seem to be paying attention to the issue of adequate affordable housing. Agenda item 14 is an example of this deficiency. I agree with the statement in the strategic plan that is necessary to have a diverse array of affordable housing in Huntington Beach. I also believe that the number one responsibility of our city council is to maintain a safe city. This is accomplished through many departments, not just fire and police. Clean, safe, affordable housing is very much a part of achieving a safe city. Indicators of need include overcrowding, wait lists, low vacancy rates, long commutes by the workforce. You say that you provide proactive programs to address the diverse housing needs within the city. And the actual strategy is to, quote, "maintain local control of land use planning." Well, I should hope so. These statements are gratuitous and not based in reality. They offer no insight into your plans to satisfy the housing needs of the residents. You have actually squandered that responsibility by not approving a housing element. And lawsuits with the state over the RENA calculation. How do these actions address this strategic goal? There's a real disconnect here. There is no glimmer of detail in this plan for what types of programs the city does or will offer and where the funding will come from. When our city does not address the housing needs of all residents, an unsafe, unhealthy, aesthetically unappealing environment is created. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Ma'am clerk, the last group.
Yep, the next group, please come down. Ann Palmer, Carol Daws, Cindy, Andrew Einhorn, Dennis, TJ England, Brian Beha, Zignesh Padair, Terry Rose, Neil.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening, council members. My name is Carol Daws, resident of Huntington Beach for 28 years. Although you offered public meetings to address the charter amendments, thank you, Councilmember Casey McKeon, for making this happen. I feel the majority is not listening to the will of the people. As you witnessed at the public meetings and as it's been recorded by emails from the community, there has been more public opposition to these measures than support. Yet you have not worked with concerned residents by either eliminating the proposed charter amendments altogether or unbundling and revising them so they're less confusing. After all of these hours of public meetings, you have been unsuccessful explaining the rationale for taking over elections from the highly-rated Orange County Register of Voters. Why is no other Orange County city doing this? Maybe because it's unnecessary and expensive. What is the actual cost of running an election for a city our size? It seems to be a huge question mark on your part. But one thing is certain, the state attorney general will make sure our residents' voting rights aren't violated. And the cost for that level of litigation will be staggering for Huntington Beach taxpayers. Finally, I'd like to address another issue that's really bothering me. Why is our city council bringing politics into Huntington Beach? The other day, a friend of mine, who has been involved in Fountain Valley city politics for years, told me that he heard that Huntington Beach is now being run by MAGA loyalists. I find his comment very sad because during all the years I lived here, there were always Republicans and Democrats on the council who worked together to make big things happen. U.S. Open Surfing, Bolsochica Wetlands, the Arts Center, and developments that transformed our city from a sleepy beach town to a dynamic world-class destination. That's why I believe Mayor Strickland's endorsement of Trump over the weekend was totally inappropriate. Former defeated and disgraced president has been indicted four times on a total of 91 charges, is liable for fraud and rape, and belittles wounded veterans and high-ranking military leaders. Allowing Trump to fly over our airshow, which is supposed to be a community event, not a partisan fundraiser, that was a huge mistake and was completely hypocritical for an event that's supposed to honor our military. Furthermore, it doesn't seem ethical that our city attorney is communicating with Trump about policy matters at pricey MAGA fundraisers. He's supposed to be a nonpartisan government official. In fact, none of you should be making such blatant attempts to politicize.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
I'm TJ England. I'm a 55-year resident and homeowner in Huntington Beach. I'm against these poorly researched and planned unnecessary charter amendments, as many of our citizens have said over and over. You claim we've had voter fraud in Huntington Beach despite all the evidence that states that says the state of California and the city of Huntington Beach don't have voter fraud. And I have a question for you. If the four of you and the attorney were elected in this last election in a fraudulent election, what does that make you? If you were elected in an election with fraud, something's wrong here. After you dissolved this, and also, the attorney general called our state attorney in the last meeting I was here, the enemy. The state attorney in California is our enemy? I don't get it. After you dissolved the seven committees, I believe we now have 31. I saw this online. I'm not real positive on my statistics, but after the seven were dissolved, I believe we have 31 community committees, groups in Huntington Beach. According to what's on the city website, it said that the mayor is on 11 committees. Mr. Burns is on 17. Mr. McKeon is on 13. And our Mrs. Vandermark is on 23 committees. How can one person serve on 23 committees? I find that difficult. I can't see any business that would allow one person to operate on all of these committees, if this is the facts. Our minority members, according to the website, Ms. Bolton and Ms. Moser serve on one committee, the Huntington Beach Council on Aging, according to our website. So we have two, we have a majority running the city in all of the committees. I find that frightening. And I also disagree totally with this no mask, no vaccine. I'm a former Army nurse and a former operating room nurse, and I think you don't know what you're talking about.
10 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hold my time, please. You all saw me here. I was the first one here, and yet somebody's stacking the deck on the speakers.
May I respond to that, Mayor?
Yeah, hold the time.
All right.
Ma'am clerk, go ahead.
I just want to make our resident know that people can request, put requests in to speak prior to the beginning of the meeting if they reach out to me directly. Some people bring speaker sheets to my counter, others email, and so I did not take you out of order. You were put in the order that they were received. So I'm sorry that you didn't know that, but...
Okay, thank you.
Can we put them back to three minutes?
Please start my time. Honorable Mayor, elected city representatives, my name is Dennis, and I'm a 40-year resident of Huntington Beach. Recently, one of our representative, Diane Feinstein, passed away. She was a wife, a mother, a grandmother, and served California for over 35 years. Whereas I didn't agree with her politics, you have to admit, she did her job. Our governor, on the other hand, announced that he's going to elect first a Democrat. Well, that's a given, that she's going to, it's going to be a lady. Well, that's sexist. It's going to be a black person. Well, that's racist. And in a population of some 309 million people, most of which are Democrats, apparently he had difficulty finding somebody qualified to appoint to the office. So he appointed a lady from Maryland, who isn't even a registered voter in California, who happens to be a Democrat, a female, a black, and a lesbian. Hey, there we go. Now, we're gonna have somebody up here to talk about this race thing, which makes me sick. And somebody's going to allege that some of our council members are racist or sexist or belong to white supremacy organizations. First off, let me say that a Hispanic mother and grandmother probably is not a white racist. Secondly, let me state that the Proud Boys is not a racist organization. Contrary to their opinions, the leader of the Proud Boys happens to be a mixed-race black person, and the Proud Boys were formed as a counter to ATIFA, not Black Lives Matter. And Black Lives Matter by name and definition is a racist organization. So anybody who wants to stand up here and say that somebody else is racist, that somebody else is a homophobe, somebody else is a sexist, well, they're probably in themselves a racist, a homophobe, and a sexist. So to all of you people who are racist and homophobes and sexist, I have a hand signal for you that has nothing whatsoever to do with white power. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
That was scary. Okay, so I just have a couple of things to say. I don't have a lung thing. But this is a direct, my name is Terry Rose. I've lived here almost 40 years in November. It'll be 40 years. It bothers me, it makes me very sad, that it looks like there's favoritism on our city council that want to work for the good of themselves and not for the good of the whole. Accusing the city clerk of cheating to get their side to get in front of the line. And what about the uneven ad hoc committees, only with your posse? Those are the only people that are on these ad hoc committees. So that's one thing. Secondly, along with all the other people who mentioned the measures, I think they should be separate so that we know what we're voting for. We lose, no matter what. If we say no, we lose. If we say yes, we lose, because they're bundled together in a way such that we can't win. The other thing is, is again, the posse ran on no changes unless government intervention. That was a bait and switch. But last I want to mention, I live on Utica Avenue. Who decided we were the Bicycle Boulevard? Because right now, we have e-bikes going up and down the street, thinking they own the street, not paying attention to stop signs. They don't have licenses, so you can't even give them a ticket, and pounding their bikes is ridiculous because they just pay the impound and they're back out again. I saw a motorist sitting at a stop sign on Huntington and Utica for five minutes while the e-bikes did donuts and wheelies and stuff in the middle of the intersection. And when he honked, they gave him the signal, one finger on their hand, and that was it. They didn't stop. So I'm really concerned about the e-bikes. I want that whole Bicycle Boulevard removed from the street, from Utica. We didn't get the vote. We weren't even asked. All of a sudden, we had signs that said Bicycle Boulevard, and it's made it a Mecca for e-bikes and skateboarders. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
My name is Cindy, Huntington Beach resident. I'm going to speak tonight in relation to Section 705. I want to just mention again that council members are elected to bipartisan positions, not to Republican or Democrat, and that means moving an agenda forward that provides a balanced representation of all Huntington Beach residents. All of you, in one way or another, listed on your websites that the city needed to be responsible in their financial spending. And Mr. McKeon, I want to speak directly to what you have on your website, and I'm going to quote. You say, "Now is the time to involve residents and their local government to ensure they have a seat at the table so that their voices are heard." You go on to say, "And their solutions to solving problems are taken into account." And then you say, "Local government works for the residents and taxpayers, so our elected officials need to listen to their constituent concerns." I truly believe, Mr. McKeon, that you, you are trying to do that, which is why I think you proposed that may instead of shall at the last council meeting in regards to Section 705. There are three areas in that section. One is voter ID, one is ballot box monitoring, the last has to do with elected officials. When you were asked, you said you wanted it changed to all of those shals, to mayes, because I think you're trying to find a middle ground. There is no middle ground on this, and I think you know that. With your knowledge, your advanced education in business, I think you know that this is financially irresponsible. It is not listening to the constituent concerns, because at all meetings and in all written correspondences to the council, for every meeting you've had since those proposals will move forward, the vast majority of speakers and writers and authors have been against it. I think you're trying to do the right thing. And so I ask you, what does it mean to say the elected officials need to listen to their constituent concerns? Are not my concerns about voter integrity just as important as those that have spoken to mayor? My election confidence would be destroyed if this legislature passes, and I would like you to consider my opinion as much as you consider those others. Some of you say, "Well, just let the voters decide," and that's a completely irresponsible position. It is your job not to waste taxpayer money, to ask what-if questions, and to dismissing things that are unimportant. I'd like, in closing, just to say, I truly believe that this is what you said on your site. I truly believe with the right agenda in place, we can put aside our political differences. I would like to ask that you would consider our... I would like to ask that you would consider our input, not just tolerate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Andy Einhorn, Huntington Beach. I'm requesting an external, independent investigation of one of your colleagues. This is a picture of AKA Baked Alaska and councilperson Vandermark. Bake Alaska pleaded guilty. He was prosecuted for criminal actions on January sixth. Antonio Foreman and councilperson Vandermark. Foreman participates with Oat Keepers and other extremist groups. Foreman and Baked Alaska together as they marched with white nationalists in Charlottesville. You can see the white torches in the background. This is the group that chanted Jews will not replace us. Since we have no pictures of Base Stickman, let's discuss him. He's described in The Statesman, an Idaho newspaper, as a member of the Proud Boys and Oat Keepers. And here's a quote from Stickman. "Encourage people to teach their kids to fight and avoid blacks at all costs." His previous convictions included robbery and felonies. Now, the social media post by councilperson Vandermark. While celebrating with Base Stickman and baked, sorry for the typo, Alaska, I quote councilperson Vandermark. "My son got a few tips from Base Stickman on how to protect himself from Antifa masked On the top of the slide is a social media post by white supremacist Johnny Benitez, and I quote, "Careful calling them out, they'll brand you a Nazi." Unquote. Minutes later, the social media post by Councilman Vandermark, and I quote, "I'm okay with that." Unquote. People of this city need to know if this conduct represents the individual's authentic self and will these comments and its sordid associations of the past affect our governmental decisions of today. The people have a right to know. I request that councilperson Vandermark resigns tonight until an external, independent inquiry is conducted with a goal of truthfulness and fairness at every turn. We can accept the results of this inquiry, but the truth must be revealed. We want the truth behold. Truth be told. Truth be told. Truth be told. Truth be told.
Ten seconds.
Good luck in your state.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Here's a free tip to Dennis, who spoke before. The "I am not a racist" speech is not something that non-racists have to make unprompted, and calling someone a-black really does not help your point. So first, I want to voice my opposition to Agenda Items 23, 758, and 756 regarding the dissolution of citizen commissions and the mask and vaccine mandate policy. These commissions represent an opportunity to broaden the reach and impact of resident involvement and are an important component of city government responding to resident needs. There's no reason and no benefit associated with their dissolution. Second, the mask and vaccine policy is pointless. There is currently no call for any such mandate, and if for some reason they were to take place, the authority of the facility would be irrelevant if there were to be some actual enforcement mechanism that would make such a thing even possible. Onto other matters. First, I want to thank Councilwoman Moser for raising the item of the housing element with respect to the discussions of homelessness last week. The availability and cost of housing plays a large role in the factors that contribute to homelessness and complicate the ability of the city to effectively resolve them. As was mentioned last week, when landlords have a greater demand for housing and command greater prices, they have the ability to reject city vouchers and consider other renters, which really defangs the ability for the city to use vouchers and other policies to address homelessness and get people back into homes. Passing a housing element opens the city up to receipt of certain state funds we cannot otherwise be granted and provides a path for easing the accessibility and cost of housing for renters and other residents, which will help reduce the rate of residents experiencing homelessness in the first place and assist in helping individuals find and retain housing as they reintegrate into the community. Second, I hope that the focus and discussion on e-bikes can serve as a springboard for discussions on cycling and accessibility in the city more generally. Last session, again, Councilwoman Moser discussed her experience and discomfort related to allowing her son to cycle to boxing practice. A lack of cyclical accessibility is dangerous for those cycling and results in more cars on the road for trips that could be taken on a bike or on foot otherwise. For example, that one trip to take your son there and back, and then to pick him up there and back, that's four car trips that could be two bike rides. So having that, you know, the more that we open up the city to people to walk and bike to places they want to go, number one, the more they can experience the city, the more, you know, open and accessible the city is to non-resident visitors, and the more people can actually be a part of the community. And again, even if you never plan on riding a bike in the city, every single person who is riding a bike represents one less car that you're waiting behind. And then finally, on local control, if we really care about preserving local control, then the number one focus should be on actually passing a housing element so that we can retain our local control. Personally.
Ten seconds.
I really don't care if we have massive structures going up for housing or not, but I know most people really would not like that. So unless you plan on winning against the state, which I don't think is gonna happen, you're not gonna have that ability.
Thanks for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hello, good evening. My name is Brian Vea, and I'm a resident of the city. And I first of all want to say, whoever arranged to have President Trump fly over our city in that airshow, I applaud you. Woo! That was really cool. That was really cool. So to get the national attention of President Trump, there's things going on in this community that I support, that he supports, and we've been watching, and everyone's watching, the nation's watching, the world is watching, and it's very cool. So again, I applaud all the conservative things and the efforts that are going on in here, in the city. I know that everything isn't perfect, and we're still figuring things out, and we're gonna work things out. But as for this past weekend, I think we're still abuzz from the awesome airshow that happened. And it was just absolutely amazing. There were so many people that came here, including a lot of liberal people. I saw a lot of Subarus there, a lot of Priuses there, and there was a lot of masks. People were wearing masks there. So of all these liberals that came in to support our local economy, I applaud you guys, and I thank you. It was an awesome weekend. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Jignesh Pattiar. I mean, I want to build off of that again. I think the airshow was amazing, a great job on the council members who are actually pulling through on this. And Tony Strickland, again, thank you so much. You really deserve that comment from Donald Trump for doing such a great job for leading the city, and I think it needs to be cited and mentioned. So thank you again for that. I think what the council majority is doing right now is pushing us in the right direction, and it is putting the spotlight on Huntington Beach, and we are setting the tone for the nation to follow. And I think after going through with later today's vote on the mask mandate and the anti-vaccine mandate, it's gonna actually set a tone for what the rest of the nation's gonna be following through with. And it makes sense, true, because there's no stipulation in the Constitution that a health department can go ahead and regulate what the entire population has to do. Our rights were taken away from us, and I think the city and the council members and what they're doing right now is actually preserving the individual right. No one's saying that you can't wear a mask. No one's saying that the masks aren't inefficient. That's a different subject entirely. What we're saying is that you, as an individual, have the right to wear a mask or not wear a mask, regardless of any health pandemic that may be occurring. Because as an individual in America, we have personal freedoms. That's number one. Commenting on as well is the voter ID. I think that's a very important issue as well. Some of the conversations going up on the city council were saying that voter ID isn't necessary because it's an infringement on one of our rights, that you shouldn't have to be presenting an actual ID to be actually exercising this right, which is kind of crazy because the Second Amendment says do not infringe, and there is plenty of rights and infringements happening there just to even exercise that right. So but what do we do to protect it? We have IDs to make sure that it's properly followed. And I think the same way with our elections should be followed through the same way, too, that we need to have these IDs in place, like it's been said, to fortify our election, to make sure that there isn't any ideas that it could be fraudulent, that it could be used as an attempt to cause more mayhem, you know? And I think that's what we want to put in place, that there is less confusion, less chaos after these elections come into place. And I guess lastly, since it's already been talked about, too, I guess is these non-banning of books. I don't think anyone ever mentioned the word banning. If we're moving a book from one room to another room in the exact same building, I don't think that book is being banned, it's not being burned, it is simply being placed in a section away from children where adults can go ahead and visualize. Now, if a child wants to see it, by all means, have them parent take him there and let him go see it, but decision be something that should be in front of kids. The next thing you're gonna be able to say is we can put a Hustler magazine there and just write Areola and say, oh, no, it's education, it's anatomy. And it doesn't make any sense, obviously. So again, councilmembers, the majority, we are with you 100%. Tony Strickland.
Ten seconds.
Thank you for leading the way, and we are with you 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, next speaker, thanks for being here.
I'm short, I'm gonna use this one. Hi, Anne Palmer. I've been here thirty-plus years, and I want to say that I appreciate all the hard work that you do. This charter amendment process is amazing, and I think everybody should come Thursday nights. We hear a lot of this during council meetings. I also want to remind everybody who said something negative about this council working together that we passed, you passed, a balanced budget, seven-zero, so we know that you can work together when you want to. I'm gonna talk about something that I assume you should be working together on, but I'm not sure. So my shirt is an anti-HDD shirt, and I am requesting that during the change of zoning for the property at Bolsa Chica and Warner, that the whole project be reimagined. It is ultra-high density at seventy per acre. It is extreme height for the area. There are inadequate setbacks. It lacks open and green space. There's traffic congestion at that area. There's inadequate parking. There, for some reason, are going to be liquor sales on site. This is supposedly convalescent center, senior living, and assisted living. Not sure who's buying the liquor, but that's interesting. It's very homely. It's a big, fat, homely urban design. So I want to remind you that Dan Kalmick, you campaigned on anti-HDD. Natalie Moser, you campaigned on anti-HDD. Gracie, you also campaigned on anti-HDD. Tony Strickland, you campaigned on anti-HDD. Casey McKeon, you campaigned on anti-HDD. And Pat Burns, you also did. I didn't name Natalie Moser because she didn't campaign. I don't know where she stands. But I would appreciate it if you would support our city attorney in challenging the state to prevent urbanization of our wonderful community. It's a hard battle. We all agreed that we would fight it, and I don't know why you're stepping back now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaker, thanks for being here.
City council members, esteemed everybody else, great airshow. I really, thank you so much for doing that, and you did a wonderful job. That's great. And I think everybody, you guys deserve a big hand for that. That was really beautiful. And that's the first thing. The second thing is the, there's Thursday meetings right now so they can change the charter of the city. So you guys should show up, man. It's really interesting stuff. It's way better than football. Who won five years ago? Nobody has a clue. But this is gonna affect us forever. One of the things that's gonna affect us, and it looks like it's a fox in sheep's clothing or whatever it's called, because it's the one that you cannot vote for nepotism. Please vote that down. Please vote that down. It sounds like you guys, that means that you guys want nepotism, but everybody is related somehow. And you got, you cannot cut yourself with that, because that is gonna cause you guys major, major problems. It's gonna cause us, wait, major, major problems. There's staff that stays here forever, and then there's elected officials. The elected officials leave after four years. The staff knows this. If they don't want something done, they don't get it done. If they want something done, they'll get it done, and they'll slap it on your names or whatever, and then you'll always have to bury it, you'll always have to carry it. They trick you when you start, when you start your term, they trick you by having all the greedy little associations come over, like the police association, and tell you have to sign this, and sign this, and then pretty soon, you have no clue. Ninety-nine million dollars. It's crazy. Anyways, please do not, I do not sign that nepotism bill, and it's really serious, the seriousness of this charter is so important. Next thing is the masks. Please don't have the masks. Carey Mullis, Carey Mullis was the guy that invented the PCR test. He died right before the COVID thing was told to everyone in September 2019. In WikiLeaks, it even said it had nothing to do with the COVID-19 that he died. And he died of, he died of pneumonia, pneumonia. And he lives right in Newport. If we spend ninety-nine million dollars, and the guy that created the PCR test that said that it's no good, no good, no good at all to test for COVID, or whatever, dies in 2019, right before it came out to everybody, and our detectives next door, they get paid ninety-nine million dollars, don't even, aren't even interested to protecting us? I mean, this is getting crazy. I mean, and we're gonna put more masks on? Please, do not make us wear masks, but that's ridiculous. I mean, this is a republic, by the way. It's not a democracy. Yeah, every kid knows this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, not the democracy. Republic means, democracy is fifty-one percent of the voting people say yes, you have to do it.
Ten seconds.
Fifty-one percent of the voting people. So if only twenty percent of the people vote, and it's only eleven percent that win, we all have to do it. This is nuts. If you're a republic.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Thanks so much for being here. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna call the remaining fourteen speakers. Tim Geddis, Catherine Goddard, Ken Inoue, Butch Twining, Merle Mosheri, David Reinerson, Tony Duran, Jeanne Farins, Chris Byrne, Amory Hansen, Sandy Taylor, Jerry Donahue, Rick Brown, Dean Schwartz.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tim Geddis, forty-year resident. The truism attributed to Albert Einstein, insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. Now, as a bedfella with the council majority position on tinkering with our local election, which includes voter ID. Insanity is pushing for the same thing over and over, knowing of its massive impracticality of doing so and expecting different results. The city of Huntington Beach cannot afford, literally, this brand of insanity that would turn the community upside down to favor a misguided mega few who want to score an ideological victory at our expense. The special meetings held so far conclusively show the folly of trying to go it alone. After the city attorney's self-serving interpretation of the state attorney general's communication to the city, I read it, and I have reached the alarming conclusion that this would indeed, we would indeed be going it alone if we insist on pressing this insane solution to a problem that isn't real. It would be civic malpractice at its worst. Over the weekend, we have seen more insanity in Washington, DC, as a few misguided mega malcontents tried to shut down our government to prove their own ideological point. Are we prepared to let that happen in Huntington Beach with a move that would tank our city's economy, community, and reputation? Tony, say it ain't so. At his town hall, Tony Strickland exclaimed that saving the Pacific Airshow would be his signature act as mayor. If he succeeds at voicing this outrage on the surf city public, then that will be his signature as mayor. And not one to be proud of, since it will never be accepted. This charter amendment is not half-baked. It is not even oven-ready, and it will waste our dough in the process. Enough is enough. The posturing has to stop. I know that Mayor Strickland is not stupid enough to see that he has no chance in pulling this coup off. The question remains, is he arrogant enough to try it anyway? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening. My name is Merle Mosheri. I've lived in this community for over forty-five years. Twenty-three of those years were spent with thousands of other Huntington Beach residents who rose up to defeat Poseidon resources for building on our most valuable asset, our beach. Before I go any further, I'd like to give you a quote from Abraham Lincoln. "We, the people, are the masters of both Congress and the courts, not to overthrow the Constitution, but to overthrow men and women who pervert the Constitution." I think our city charter is akin to a Constitution, and we, the public... I think our city charter is akin to a constitution and we, the public, protest to your bids to overthrow the city constitution, the city charter by means of playing on the words contained in the charter itself. May does not mean much as shall. Presented to a person convicted of a serious crime, I would bet most criminals would much rather hear you say, may your head, your head will be cut off if you're guilty of this crime, rather than you shall have your head cut off if you're convicted of this crime. During political times in particular, it becomes popular to choose a side. Isn't the city council elected to make decisions based on information from every side that will result in the coming together of all information to make fair decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Huntington Beach? We here are talking about local decisions that affect all of us locally. Therefore, the usage of terms like our side and your side is unbecoming and uncalled for, for all of us. We do it together, folks, and we only succeed together. To deliberately try to divide the citizenship along religious, political or racial lines is self-defeating. We're better than that and we don't, won't stand by and let demagogues and politicians lead us down that uncivilized path. We trust you, each one of you, to do the best for all of us. And if you cannot feel this aspirations in your very bones, then maybe you're not the person who we should be sitting on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Jerry Donahue. I'm here to revisit the editorial in the Orange County Register on September 13th that I talked about a couple of weeks ago. The Orange County Register is not the LA Times, which is a more left-leaning newspaper. But in my opinion, it's kind of been the paragon of Republican orthodoxy for Orange County for the last 50 years that I've lived here. So there's a certain strength in the, from a Republican point of view for the register. The Fontes Media Organization that rates bias gives the Orange County Register a 4.5 number, which is a conservative number. The Wall Street Journal gets a 4.05. So the register is more conservative than the Wall Street Journal. The article that I'm going to read just a couple excerpts from is not a news article. It's not an individual opinion piece. It's an editorial and they state in their editorials, this is management's opinion of a certain issue that they want to bring attention to the public. So, September 13th. "We've long supported the idea that residents ought to be more involved in the goings-on on their local city council, given that a democracy depends on interest of voters. Little did we suspect that the widely attended meetings would be on positions of cultural battles rather than nuts-and-bolts issues. Infrastructure, parks, budgets, policing, those are the mainstays of local governance." Skipping a paragraph, talking about the prior meeting. "It was a circus, but that's what the expected result of a conservative majority that has largely preened for MAGA social media. We've complained about progressive city councils, such as those in places as San Francisco and Berkeley, that are consumed by ideological fixations. Huntington Beach has morphed into a mirror image." Last paragraph, at the end of the meeting. "Mayor Strickland harrumphed about the lack of decorum, but he's responsible for this descent into madness. He's pursued myriad policies such as challenging state laws regarding cities to permit more housing development and an attempt to turn city officials into library book censors, designed to placate conservative activists. Now the entire city is paying attention to the city council, but it's a shame for the wrong reason." Orange County Register, September 17th. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Butch Twining. I'm a 58-year resident of Huntington Beach. Been here almost my whole life. And good evening to Mayor Strickland, Mayor Pro Tem Gracie Vandermark, our esteemed city council, city manager and our city attorney. I want to have a little fun tonight and we probably haven't done this before. I want to play a game that we all know. It's called Jeopardy. So I have to kind of play a couple parts here, but bear with me. So the category is common sense for 1,000. Now Alex is going to read the, is going to read the answers. Alcohol, cigarettes, opening a bank account, apply for food stamps, apply for welfare, apply for Medicaid, Medicare, Social Security, apply for a job, apply for unemployment, rent or buy a house, apply for a mortgage, apply for a credit card, apply for a library card, buy a car, rent a car, purchase an airline ticket, actually get on that airline, get married, purchase a gun, adopt a pet, rent a hotel room, apply for a hunting license, apply for a fishing license, buy a cell phone, enter a casino, pick up a prescription, apply for a permit for a rally or a protest, donate blood, purchase nail polish at CVS, purchase certain cold medicines, purchase M-rated video games, gain access to the DNC and the RNC conventions, sign up for utility services like electricity, gas and water, or how about going and getting a US passport? Anyone in this, anybody can answer, you know, tell me what that question is? You in the red hat.
Things that require an ID?
Oh, that's correct.
Unbelievable.
Since I have a little time left, I have another category. Uncommon sense for 1,000. The answer is voting. What's the question, sir?
Things that don't require an ID?
That's right. Thank you. With my 50 seconds left, I want to be a little bit serious here. How about identifying these elusive disenfranchised people who cannot get an ID? And as a group, as a city council, let's find those people, let's help them get their IDs. We can even pay for them. I'll even volunteer to transport them there because I'm retired and I have time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. First and foremost, I just want to say the air show was a tremendous success by any measure that you have. The people that went out there were excited. It was, if it didn't give you chills, you're not breathing. I mean, it's unbelievable. But also tonight, I was going to talk about some other things, but I kept hearing this negative connotation about certain members of our community going to a mega event, which is Make America Great. And you know what? That's not a bad thing, guys. America has been the beacon of freedom for many, many years and the mega movement, if you don't remember, the border was shut down. We had 27,000 Mexican troops who were shut down. It was virtually closed. Now we've had about 12 million illegals come across. NAFTA, the US-Korea-Mexican deal was fixed. We, the United States was getting screwed left and right. That was fixed right away. NATO, supposed to spend 3% of the GNP for their own protection. We were the only ones paying for that. Trump made that happen. Now billions of dollars have gone into NATO. We had oil independence. We are a net exporter. The first day of administration of Biden, he shut that down. Our prices have gone up, our cost of living has gone up significantly. Trade with China, we're being screwed with the tariff tax. He fixed that. It's either 35, 35 or 00. You guys tell us, we fix that problem. That's all about mega. Rebuilding the economy. We had 113 all-time highs on Wall Street during the Trump administration. We rebuilt the military, billions of dollars back to the military. We had as old and decrepit equipment that they had. They stopped North Korea from shooting missiles across Japan. Israel, since 1948, every president of the United States has said they remove our embassy from Tel Aviv to Jerusalem. It was only Trump that did that. Unemployment, we had a 50-year low of unemployment. We had, and every dictator aggressiveness you've seen across the world, including the Ukraine and Russia, by the way, where we're spending billions of dollars would never have happened under this terrible mega that you keep talking about, which is Make America Great. And you know what? There's a lot of passion and support across this country for that movement because it's all about making America great. And that's why millions of people want to come here on a daily, on a weekly, on a monthly and yearly basis. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
My goodness. Well, I'm here to talk about the trajectory I see here. I've been coming to these, first of all, I'm Catherine Goddard and I've been a resident for, since 1980s. I've been watching this council since your election and what I'm seeing here is a pattern that you've adhered to and done exactly what you wanted to do, not exactly what you told us you were going to do. But basically, you've narrowed participation in this city. You have, first of all, started with, by removing the invocation that was done by people from different religious traditions at the beginning of the meeting and you've turned it into a prayer based on the Christian tradition done by two chaplains. So that makes some people feel excluded at that point. You've narrowed or destroyed the various committees and commissions, which used to have a lot of citizen input and used to have the presence of city council members at them. You've consolidated those who do go to meetings to the four people that have the majority and excluded the other three. So you've closed out some conversations that might have occurred and also a training ground for people that might sit on this dais one day. That has narrowed things. The inclusivity has been challenged in this way from, you've just gradually done this so it's not easy to see. And it appears, and then, and then the flag issue. You set that up in such a way that you were only to have a few flags flown at any one time. And then the very first major public event you have, you fly the Canadian flag and the Australian flag. So that seems to be a conflict. And what we've, what the problem is, we don't really trust what's going on here because we get one message and we see another delivered. And we hear, well, we've got this great settlement, but we can't tell you about it because you're not the clients and there's a veil of secrecy here. So it's become a problem to where we get something like we just heard, which has become this sort of major USA, you know, political situation we have going on in the country. But this is about running the city of Huntington Beach and including people and involving people. And I urge you to move forward in such a way that you include rather than exclude. It appears that this, these ballot measures for the city charter will narrow further. How many people can vote? Who can vote? And how many people get elected? And it's not to our benefit.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Yeah, David Reinerson, 27-year resident of Huntington Beach. Council members, I'm not going to talk about the charter amendments tonight. I'm going to talk about something else. I'm taking this opportunity to demand of you whether or not you had prior knowledge of the egregious politicization of the Pacific Air Show that occurred. Did you not know that not only was the ex-president's plane invited to the air show, but he was also given access to the PA system? Both of those things require advanced coordination. That an air show sponsored by the city and by a promoter to whom we've paid millions of dollars was used as a political rally by a candidate who refers to the men and women who fly those planes as suckers and losers? Any of you who approved this in advance are guilty of improper use of city funds and a serious breach of ethics and should be stripped of your council position. For those of you who did not know in advance, my question for you is this. What are you going to do about it? If there's verbiage in the contract precluding such action, I expect, not precluding such action, I expect the city to exercise its legal rights to the maximum extent to punish the transgression. If there's not such language in a contract, I expect it to be included in all future contracts of this nature. And frankly, if that language is not already in such a contract, then that raises another issue. Either Mr. Gates is not truly acting in the city's best interests or he's not quite the hotshot attorney he wants us to think he is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening. I'm Jeanne Farrens and I'm here to speak in opposition to all of the charter amendments for several reasons. First, as speakers have pointed out at the special Thursday meetings, these amendments will enshrine their proposals in what amounts to the city's constitution, making it extremely difficult for any future city councils to change them and especially when at least one of them regarding the city's flag policy is already a city ordinance. I'd like to point out that had it been in the charter, the city would have broken the law this past weekend by flying the Canadian flag next to the American flag at the Pacific Air Show. Additionally, the way the amendments are bundled with three or four irrelevant proposals demanding either a yes or no vote, all in one measure, does not encourage voter participation or faith in the election, something Councilman McKeon stated was the main purpose of these amendments. But rather it creates confusion and forces the voters to either vote for something they do not agree with, to support something they do, or to just not vote at all. How is this preserving the integrity of elections? Above all, while the majority council has insisted that this is not an attempt to take over elections from the county, if the voting measure is placed on the ballot, that's exactly what will happen. It's a certainty that Huntington Beach will be sued by Sacramento if the voter ID proposal passes. In fact, in a Thursday news release, AG Bonta promised as much. Not only did Bonta state that requiring voter ID conflicts with state law, but he also pointed out that the city has not identified any basis for its voter ID proposal, nor has any of the council majority identified such when asked directly by speakers to do so. Last week, City Attorney Gates insisted that as a charter city, Huntington Beach has a legal right to require ID. He cited as evidence a lawsuit in which Redondo Beach, a charter city, won a lawsuit regarding their right to oversee municipal elections. The lawsuit, the city of Redondo Beach versus Padilla, involved Redondo Beach setting its own state for election, but had nothing to do with voter ID, which is a much more fundamental issue. In Bonta's words, it is the foundation of our democracy. So it's unlikely this example of case law will stand up. Thus, in addition to the possible million dollars that will cost with the measure on the ballot, Huntington Beach taxpayers will likely be paying several more millions fighting a state lawsuit, not to mention unknown costs to facilitate and run its own election, issues and expenses which have not been identified or enumerated in the proposals. Are we expected to vote without knowing these specifics and costs? Finally, I object to these proposals as being nothing more than evidence that the city council dais no longer functions as a nonpartisan podium to promote policies to protect the people in Huntington Beach, but it has now become a politicized partisan platform for promoting a MAGA agenda, including protections against false conspiracies of voter fraud. As further evidence, I cite the public endorsement of Donald Trump by both Mayor Strickland, thumbs up, and Attorney Gates at this weekend's Anaheim appearance of the former president and of Attorney Gates promising that at HB we're promoting voter ranking at the local level. What does that mean? What new nefarious measures can we expect to be introduced? Measures that rather than protecting voters?
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name's Tony Duran. I'm a resident, business owner, executive board member on HB Downtown and occasionally a karaoke singer too, so. Nevertheless, I'm here to address agenda item number 12. Important item, it's micro-mobility is really very important for this city. You know, frankly, populated areas, especially those that are destination markets, have a tendency to swell in terms of number of people. And micro-mobility is extremely important for us as a society and certainly for our city. I know that e-bikes are driving people crazy and obviously I've got a vested interest in being one of those that's causing the problem. But I do want to say that first off, 80% of the trips that Americans make are less than five miles. They're driving alone in a car that weighs thousands of pounds. I mean, does that make sense? And as somebody said earlier, every time somebody is on an e-bike or electric rideable, they're not in a car. So it does reduce the congestion and the parking situation is something we probably should look at as well because there's not enough places to park e-bikes in the city currently. In terms of the perception of e-bikes being unsafe or safe, whatever it is, it's just like saying there's vehicles or automobiles that are safe or unsafe. I've seen a Toyota Prius doing 100 miles an hour down the freeway blow right by a Porsche, which was the unsafe car. It's not about the car, it's all about the rider. 100% about the rider. And there's that misconception that e-bikes are unsafe and it's really all about the rider. It's a personal choice. In terms of electric rideables too, that's one thing I do want to bring up. E-bikes are pedal bikes, but however, under the law that Governor Brown introduced in 2015, electric rideables that maintain speeds under 20 miles an hour that have two or three wheels or have the same laws as e-bikes. And I think they're really important in the city. Last weekend, we had a 90-year-old lady come out to our store. She rented one of our three-wheel vehicles, electric rideable, non-pedal vehicle. Her husband, who is 95 years old, sat in the backseat as the first time in 15 years they've been down to the beach. And they rode along the beach trail at a safe speed. All of our electric rideables are programmed to stay at the safe speed of the beach trail 10 miles an hour or under. So I think that's something we need to consider. We have got stopped by the lifeguard and also We have got stopped by the lifeguard and also some of the state police stating that they were not allowed on the beach trail, which is not what the intention of that law Lastly, I just want to say the responsibility really comes down to the parents. I know that the greatest issue seems to be around the youth. There's a lot of youth, young riders, that don't have the experience of driving automobile. They don't understand the traffic laws. They're out there, and when they come into our store, I talk to their parents, and I make it very, very clear that this is a very dangerous table.
10 seconds.
And it needs to be your responsibility because we need accountability, and we need to work together as a team, and I'll be glad to help you any way I can.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, my name is Sandy Taylor. I own two clothing boutiques downtown, and I'm also the vice president of the Board of Directors for the HB Downtown Improvement District. I am here speaking on my own behalf, and I would like to talk about the benefits of HB Downtown, the HB Downtown bid. The purpose of the bid is to create a prosperous community showcasing all that the district has to offer in a clean and safe environment. HB Downtown hosts community events like the Chili Cook-Off, Surf City Days, tree lighting, and Halloween. HB Downtown also hosts Surf City Nights, Farmer's Market, and Street Fair on Tuesdays. There are 15 complimentary booth spaces to district businesses that want to come out and participate. The purpose of Surf City Nights is to bring the community downtown during a weekday. HB also hosts the Surf City Artist and Fair every Friday. Revenue from both of these events helps to co-sponsor the nighttime ambassador program and porter services. Each business has representation on the HB Downtown website and can be featured on its social media channels. I appreciate very much the partnership between HB Downtown and the city, and I know that we both strive to make downtown a thriving tourist and local community. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight in support of Item 15, Councilwoman Vandermark's resolution to declare Huntington Beach a no mask and no vaccine mandate city. When Ms. Starr Jones guest-hosted a few years back on The View, she joked that the coronavirus would ensure that college students would no longer need to belong to a fraternity or sorority to learn the Greek alphabet. Her comment was made when the Alpha variant was the dominant variant, now the Pi variant. It is unfortunate that this resolution is needed, but during the recent drama related to the Pi variant, the city and the country was reminded of the remnant of misinformation relating to the coronavirus. This misinformation resulted in Lionsgate and Morris Brown College reinstating mask mandates. Lionsgate is in Santa Monica, but its proximity means it would not be surprising if it had one worker in Huntington Beach. Morris Brown College, like most colleges and universities, accepts students from cities around the nation and globe. All individuals, including residents of Huntington Beach, can be considered for admission to the college. Huntington Beach has an interest in opposing these unneeded mandates when they affect Huntingtonians. Thankfully, these mandates have since been lifted. The fact is, the coronavirus is no longer a serious threat to the world. Individuals have a right to make decisions, even decisions not based on facts and science. But the city can and should declare the lack of support for mandaters to make those decisions. Mr. George Takei once said, quote, "I think we learn more from those times in our history where we stumbled as a democracy than we learned from the glorious chapters," end quote. Tonight, I urge the city council to boldly go where no city council has gone before and declare Huntington Beach a no mask and no vaccine mandate city. Once again, I urge a yes vote on Item 15.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Mayor Protam, and Honorable Members of City Council, Attorney, City Attorney, Senator, anyway, everybody, thank you. My name is Kenny Nowhere. I'm a 50-year resident of Huntington Beach, and I'm here to talk about something that's not political. I'm here to talk about money. Specifically, I'd like to talk about Agenda Item Number 14, adopting the 2023-27 Strategic Plan. Before I make my comments, I'd like to point out this fact to all of you. In the recently released budget for the five years ended June 30, 2028, we are projecting a $9 million deficit from the general fund, a $9 million deficit. In order to make sure that we control our costs, I am recommending, and I've recommended to several of you before, that we adopt the current policy of having a strategic and cumulative schedule that shows all of the reserves, the potential revenues and expenses, and potential, potential liabilities, so that you all there can make intelligent decisions based upon the financial impact of your decisions. One of the things that I'm really amazed at is that quite often, things get brought up by the city council members without an idea of what the cost is. A good example is these elections. I've heard of anything from 1.4 million to $6 million. Given the fact that we don't know, I don't think you're in a position or we're in a position to make that decision at this point in time. I think that further, I think that all further motions by the city council people have a financial cost associated with it so that you can all evaluate these budget items before you make your decisions. As a prior CPA, I volunteered my services to try to help create these schedules and to present them quarterly so that all of you will understand the financial health of the city as you make decisions. Please do that. I think the citizens deserve that. And Pat, I understand you're an accountant. I certainly understand, I think you know that, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
My name is Dean Schwartz, and I'm a citizen advocate in favor of non-smokers' rights. Non-smokers' rights, it's a big topic. It's a human rights issue. It's a health rights issue. Outdoor dining in Huntington Beach, I believe, is still available for people to smoke next to families, children, others. I had a restaurant in Los Angeles and fought eight years, and Los Angeles was the second major city to enact smoke-free outdoor dining, and I'm very proud of that. But moving to Huntington Beach seven years ago, I noticed that Huntington Beach, trying to be a forward city, still has not made a move forward in the advancement of protecting the innocent from secondhand smoke. For the mere necessity that a person has to breathe and the fact that cigarettes, vaping, et cetera, they fume the air, you can see the vape when people vape, and it's just a huge cloud, and it's going many, many feet, not just 20 feet. But it would be great if Huntington Beach, the city council members, one or all, would meet together. I'd be happy to sit down as a little task force group to write the language to the law to protect the people. The lungs are the most precious tissues in the body, and we have to breathe. But most affected is also the heart and many other organs. So it's not just lungs. It's not that you just don't like it or it gives you sinus infections. This estimated 4,000 Californians a year die from secondhand smoke, not firsthand smoke, secondhand smoke. That's in California, not the United States. So it's a major issue, and I would hope the city council would possibly work with me, consider meeting, and again, drafting the language to the law to protect the innocent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Mr. Schwartz, Mr. Schwartz, could you please fill out a blue card, and I'll reach out to you. The officer here can get one for you. Thank you.
And to the gentleman before me, Mr. Anoye, I wanted to say "Gochiso Samadeshta." It means he did a very good job speaking. And I know in the past Huntington Beach has a sister city in Japan. What city is it in Japan? Does anybody know?
And Joe.
And Joe.
I would like to see that start up again soon.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
My name's Chris Byrne, and I wrote some notes. First of all, I want to thank you, Gracie, for getting out in front of the mandate issue. Definitely in favor. And also, the airshow was epic this weekend, just unbelievable. I mean, you can't, I don't imagine how anybody could watch that and not feel so proud of the city and so proud of our country at the same time. So I want to say thank you, Mayor Strickland, and Mayor Protam, Gracie Vandermark, and Councilman McKeon, and Councilman Pat Burns, for campaigning on that issue and bringing the airshow to Huntington Beach, keeping it here. Such a great event. Also, you know, a lot of talk from, I call them the haters in this city, but you know, they got their ideas, I guess, but about inclusivity, exclusivity, this side, that side, and governing from one side or the other. And I just want to remind them that I think it was Mayor Kim Carr that said, "Alls you got to do is be able to count to four." So I think that's how that all started. And you guys were really happy about that when you could actually count to four. And now it seems like we can still count to four, but it seems like it's flipped, and a lot of people don't like that. But they liked it when it was the other way. The other thing, 57, there was a speaker up here at a previous meeting, and she's an educator in this town, I guess, and so she was railing against Mayor Strickland and some of the other guys on council. And she said, "I see you, Mayor Strickland." And so really, I wanted to come up here and see if that was difficult. And it's really not. Like, I can see you, Mayor Strickland. I can see all of you people. So I don't know what she was talking about. But she also said, I guess this is a shot at you, Mayor Strickland, that the mayor has the city clerk prepare the agenda for him. Like, that's a big deal.
10 seconds.
What else do clerks do? And I also want to say that you run a great, great council meeting.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you so much.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you. Okay, members, let's go down to the agenda. Next up, council committee appointments. Does any member have anything to announce? Seeing none. AB 1234 reporting, does any member have anything to report? Seeing none. Openness in the negotiation disclosures, does any member have anything to disclose? Seeing none. City manager report. City manager, do you have anything to report?
No report.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Members, now we're going to the consent calendar, Items 5 through 12. I will point out that staff is requesting to pull Item 12 for separate discussion and action. Does any member have any of the items to pull off the consent?
Seven, please.
Mr. Kalmak, number seven. Any others? Repeat that again, Councilman. Councilman Burns on number eight. Any others? Seeing none. I would like to move that we move the consent calendars, 5, 6, 9, 10, and 11. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Friendly amendment to as amended by the city clerk.
As amended by the city clerk, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. It's removed in second and as amended by the city clerk. Please call the roll.
All right. Councilmember Kalmak.
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Okay, members, we're going now to file Item 7. It's been pulled by Councilman Kalmak. Councilman, you may open.
I have really nothing to say on this. I just wanted to make sure the votes were recorded correctly the other second. So I'll move the item, and I'll be...
I'll second it. Go ahead.
On G, on 7G, I believe it is?
Your microphone, please.
Yeah, hit the microphone, Councilman.
On 7G, the second line of, it says, "July, Fourth of July Parade." If it could say, because we're changing the name, "Independence Day Parade," that'd be the only change.
I think we brought that up as a kind of a discussion point, but I think it changes a lot of things, and I don't know if it's contemplated on second reading. I mean, I'm happy to have a discussion about it, but I don't know if that was part of the initial conversation for the changing the committee, because there's, I think, secondary things impacted.
Didn't we formally change that already as a council?
We changed the name of the committee and not the parade, though.
No, I, okay.
Well, this does say the Fourth of July Executive Board, so since we changed it into Independence Day Board under this situation, wouldn't that make sense?
I think it's worth a conversation.
City Attorney, comment?
Yeah, so that change was not requested for the ordinance itself, so the ordinance is as is. So if you want to change the ordinance, you can approve all the others, and we can bring this one back at a later date with new wording.
I would say yes. I mean, if we're going to change it to the Independence Day Parade, we might as well change what's written in G to "from Fourth of July Parade."
Oh, Councilman?
Yeah, so this was on, this is a boards and commissions conversation, right? And I understand the implication of changing the name of the board and why not change the name of the parade, but I think that, I think there's a bunch of other inputs into that calculus that would likely, we'd need input on from the community at large, right? Changing it from the Fourth of July Parade to the Independence Day Parade. I don't know either way about that, but I think that there's branding and marketing and a whole lot of other stuff that likely would need to be changed for that. And I don't, I would like to understand a little more of the cost before just changing a board to changing a whole parade situation.
How about we do this? I'm just offering a suggestion. Just a suggestion. We move it as is, and then Pat Burns and Mayor Protam work with staff on figuring out what we can do to get that change in, or if we need to bring it back to a full council. Will you be amenable to that?
Yes.
Will you be amenable to that?
Yes.
Okay, so let's move it as is, and we'll have some follow-up on that. So it's been moved?
I have some additional comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
No problem. So my comment or question is about the youth board part, which was Part E on that. So my question is, what is the new version? Because I saw that in this, everything is crossed out, as I understand, because we're dissolving the youth board. I understand that we're moving to some version or form of youth committee, but I guess my question is many, many fold. What's the new version going to be called? What will it look like? Will it have the same requirements that the previous youth board has? And also, that being said, when will the applications, interviews, and the first meeting be? Normally, this happens, you know, over the summer. It starts in September. Also, one of the other pieces with this is one of the items that was recommended that the youth, I'll call it committee, focus on or help with was the Junior Citizens Academy. Normally, that starts at the beginning of the school year as well, so I had questions about what was happening with that. Maybe Ashley or Travis.
Yeah, maybe I'll just kick it off, and Ashley will provide some additional information. So the committee will be run through the Community and Library Services Commission, the same staff that was providing staffing for it for the Youth and Government Day. And we also, through some of this discussion, discussed the Junior Citizen Academy and maybe some participation with that, along jointly with the city manager's office. And so then I will turn the rest of the questions over to Ashley Weisler.
So the intention is for the application and interview process to remain the same as well, and then we would intend to, since we're a little delayed on understanding what the scope of this board is, the intention would be to select the youth who would be appointed to the Youth Civic Leaders Collaborative, and then the first meeting would begin at the beginning of the year.
And I believe we changed some of those rules to move away from the Brown Act. Is that correct?
Correct.
So there's more interaction between the youth with each other?
Correct. So through this ordinance change, there would no longer be a Brown acted board. Teenagers have cell phones and don't necessarily understand the limitations that the Brown Act creates, and so we want to foster more collaboration between them because that's naturally what they would be doing.
I totally appreciate all of that as a past liaison of the board as well. or collaborative be? Will it have a similar look or structure that the old youth board had, except for the Brown Act portion?
Correct. That would be, that would be the one major change, is it would no longer be Brown Acted.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And then with the Junior Citizens Academy, because we have connected these now, again, that normally was, or I shouldn't say normally, it was only one time that we've done it, but was, kind of followed the school year. I think it was either September, October that we started it before. Have we had communications with the schools about that so that they can plan? And when are we planning to actually do that?
So, those are going forward this fall, and there has been discussions over the summer. I can follow up and give you some more details this fall, but I know those are coming forward in the next month or so.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. And then the other thing was recommendation C that was mentioned within this item, which was the dissolution of the Human Relations Committee. And I just wanted it noted, since that happened, the Orange County Hate Crime Report came out. And I think that it's just really notable that this committee has been dissolved at a time when hate crime activity, hate incident activity has increased. Orange County has seen an increase in hate crimes of 75% and hate incidents of 142% in the last five years. And also of note, there was a 126% increase in anti-LGBTQ hate activity reported compared to 2021. Of course, this is not just Huntington Beach, but we are part of Orange County. And I just think it's important to note that at a time of rising hate activity, we are removing in the Human Relations Committee, which helped to work with the Huntington Beach Police Department on looking at that, and also on trying to bring people together in the community so that we don't have increased hate activity. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved. It's been seconded. Clerk, I seconded it, by the way. It was moved by Mr. Kalmak.
All right. We ready to vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalmak.
I am no on A, B, C, and D, and yes on the balance.
City Attorney is here. Again, I know you've done that in the past. I want to make sure we clear that up. Are we allowed to do that? They can choose, or is the item have to be done as a whole?
Well, the last time you voted on it, you voted on it as a package. But if he wants to voice his dissent or nonapproval of those portions, that's...
I, I think...
Actually, there, there were some differences in the voting when the, the ordinances were introduced, and it's indicated in the report. So, go ahead and record that. All right.
Okay.
Stevens recording this. All right. Councilmember Mosher?
No.
Mayor Protam Van der Mark?
Yes.
Mayor Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Bolton?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
So, we have four in the affirmative. And then we have no's from Councilmember Mosher and Councilmember Bolton, and Councilmember Kalmak's mixed bag, which we have over here. And I'll, I'll go ahead and make sure it's in the record. Thank you.
Right. Members, file item eight. Councilman Burns pulled the item. You may open.
One line in there says HB desires to pursue a project that would result in the modification of the existing regulations and establish a modern local cannabis retailer licensing program. For that alone, I'll, I'd just like to vote on A, B, C separately.
Okay, so you're asking to pull A, B, C, or the whole item then?
Just, yeah, but to vote on them separately.
So, I want to make sure I get your motion right. You want to vote on A, and then B, and then C?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any objection? Seeing none. Clerk?
I would, discussion.
Oh, discussion, sorry. Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah. Thank you for pulling this, Councilmember Burns. I think this is an important step for the city. At my request, I asked staff to go ahead and apply for this at a request of actually a resident who mentioned that there was a grant available, and staff worked real hard to get this done pretty quickly. We were awarded a $325,000 planning grant. The nice thing about this is it doesn't commit us to anything. We don't have to pay back any money. We don't spend. We're already pretty well down the path on investigating if this is something for the city of Huntington Beach. The city of Huntington Beach has voted overwhelmingly for tax, for legalization and taxation of retail and non-retail cannabis in the city. And so, I think this is great that we have some free money from the state to, to figure out what the best way forward is on this. And this will help us with making sure that if, if we decide to go forward, that we have the, the best, we have the finance, financial mechanism to, you know, come up with the best policy we possibly can. So...
So, just on that, the vote was to legalize marijuana? It wasn't just for a tax?
So, Prop 64, back in 20-something, passed with...
Last year?
No, way back in...
Okay, I'm saying...
You're talking about the statewide initiative?
I'm saying Huntington Beach residents.
I'm saying the statewide initiative passed, which allowed for retail cannabis in the state of California, passed with a majority in Huntington Beach. Measure O passed with 60, Measure A passed with, failed with 65% of the vote, and then passed with, I think, 54% of the vote in...
So, it failed just below 65%?
Yeah, yeah.
It's for a tax, though, not to...
Correct. But the implication was, is and was that this residents of Huntington Beach are, are open to this. But again, this is a planning grant that we, I know that in our ad hoc committees have discussed that there is an idea to put this on, on the ballot at some point, the entire resolution, and after we've done, effectively received a grant to, to do the work, to ask the residents if they believe that the work that's been done, they agree with. And the fact that we're, you know, projecting deficits and some out years here, that retail cannabis could help shore up some of that, that deficit going forward, in addition to non-retail potential use. So, again, we got to put, I think, a lot of things on the table, but I think this gives us an opportunity to do it thoughtfully, and then ask, you know, potentially ask the voters for if they agree or not agree with the, the program that, that this council develops. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, me, I'm personally against it because I think the process to get this, this point was disingenuous. If we wanted to ask the voters if they want to sell cannabis in the city, we should have asked that question, not a hypothetical. If we did, we'll tax it. So, I feel we're just slowly, like, you know, nose under the tent, trying to chip away at this. If, if we want to ask the voters if we should allow cannabis sales, let's do that. And then at that point, do build through this infrastructure that this grant would, would allow us to do. But to do this first, without asking that question to, to the voters if they want to sell cannabis in the city, I think is disingenuous.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mayor Protam?
I too would prefer the community vote on whether they even want this in the city or not before moving forward. I know you say it's free money. No money coming from the government is ever free. It's all of our taxes. So, let's just clear that up. But I would, I would not feel right taking this money without the residents first voting on whether they want this or not.
So, more discussion? Seeing none. There was no objection to going each one, A, B, and C. So, Madam Clerk, will you call a roll on number A?
Somebody going to move it?
This is the 325,000 grant.
So, what, do you want a motion and a second for A?
I, I did without objection, so I think that, that goes through all, all of them.
Well...
But we can, we can move it.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Okay. Councilmember Kalmak?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Van der Mark?
No.
Strickland?
No.
McKeon?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
No.
Item fails, 3, 4.
Okay. Now, I, do I hear a motion for item B?
I believe B's moot at this point.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? I, I move that we move item C?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kalmak?
No.
Mosher?
No.
Van der Mark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Yes.
Item fails, 3, 4.
Okay. So, now, going down the agenda, members were on file item 12, and I believe the staff asked to pull this to make a presentation. Is that correct?
And I, just real quick before I move on, I think the clerk announced it failed 3, 4, but C passed 4, 3?
Oh, I apologize.
Just making sure.
Thank you, Attorney.
Thank you. So, item number 12, I believe it was pulled for staff presentation. Is that correct? No?
So, are we starting item 12?
Yeah.
Okay.
If I could just comment, the reason it was pulled, it really probably should have been on, in different categories. It appears on the agenda. It's a, an item for introduction. It's the emergency ordinance, and it does require a five-plus vote to pass. So, that's why it gets a little bit different treatment. So, setting that aside, I wasn't sure if there was more of a presentation by staff or not. But I just want to make that clear for the public and for the council.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
I don't think so. There's no staff presentation, right? Because it's the ordinance, the second reading of the ordinance.
All I, all my, yeah. Sounds like, it sounds like that.
For clarity, it's, the ordinance is the same, except there were findings added to support the emergency action by the council.
So, so we pulled it, so you could make that announcement, then it needs five votes?
Correct.
Emergency action. Got it. Okay.
So, I appreciate staff working so hard to get the emergency status for this forward. And in an email exchange, it sounds like the other, the actual ordinance that we pass will come back at the next meeting, so then they'll overlap, and we will have, one way or another, we will have the law in place, unbroken from there. I think that this is a good first step for the community and gives our place the tools to start regulating.
And for clarity, too, with a five-plus vote tonight, it is effective tonight. With a five-plus vote tonight, it takes effect immediately, just so you know.
Right. So, let's, let's move it. Let's move it quickly.
It's been moved.
Let's move it quickly.
Just had a comment, yeah.
Councilman?
So, I also appreciate the staff making the findings and doing the research so that this could be adopted as an emergency ordinance, because I do think it's very important that the PDB be able to enforce this immediately, so starting tonight. So, part of the findings that the staff provided, 53% of all bicycle-related collisions in the city now involve e-bikes, and the largest age group reporting injuries are children under age 18. So, this is definitely necessary to help ensure the safety of our kids and everybody else who's on our roadways and on our bike paths. So, with that, that's it.
Is that a second? I don't have a second.
I'll second it. Let's, let's move, call the roll.
All right. Councilmember Kalmak?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Van der Mark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Passes 7, 0.
All right, members.
I'd like to, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to read for the record the title of emergency ordinance, number 4304, "An Emergency Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Huntington Beach, Amending Chapter 10.84 of the Huntington Beach Municipal Code Relating to Bicycle Regulations." Thank you.
Okay, members, we're now going to public hearing, item number 13. Introduce item and refer to city manager and staff report.
Mr. Mayor, I have to make a statement real quick here.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, don't mind. I, out of the abundance of caution, one of my clients, who's also my bookkeeper, put in a protest letter. And normally, if there wasn't a protest letter, it likely would be fine under a conflict of interest rule. But since they've announced that they are protesting the vote, I'm going to recuse myself from this item.
Good. Thank you, Councilman. So, for the public, this is HB Downtown Business Improvement District Public Hearing. Introduce item and refer city manager and for staff report.
Chris Casanova.
Good evening, Mayor Stricklands and members of the city council. I'm Chris Casanova. I'm the Economic Development Manager. The item before you this evening is a public hearing to consider the annual renewal of the Huntington Beach Downtown Business Improvement District. For background, state law authorizes cities to create business improvement districts and to levy an assessment from businesses within a defined geographic area. Those assessments fund activities and improvements above city baseline services that benefit and support those businesses. In 2004, in response to requests from downtown merchants, council established the Huntington Beach Downtown Business Improvement District as a city-approved program. Pursuant to state law, an annual report for the district must be filed with the city. Member businesses are also provided an opportunity to protest the annual assessment at a public hearing. A little about the district. It's comprised of approximately 255 businesses. Assessments range from $80 to approximately 1,400, and are based on the size of the space, the location, and the type of business. Total assessments collected for the upcoming year are estimated to be between 110 and 115,000, based on business license data. Recommendations for how to allocate the assessment funds are made by a council-appointed advisory board and considered annually. So, in 2008, council appointed a nonprofit organization, HB Downtown, as the district's advisory board. HB Downtown was formed by the businesses within the district, and it's comprised of paid staff and a volunteer board of directors. They administer and manage the district activities as outlined in the ordinance and resolution that created the district. So, I just want to take a moment here to distinguish the difference between the use of the term "bid." When we reference it as a district, it's really a city-approved program versus HB Downtown, which is a nonprofit organization, and it functions similar to a merchants' association, and it also serves as council's advisory board to the district. They often go by the same name, so I just want to clarify that. Every year, the advisory board, HB Downtown, is required to submit an annual report to council, which includes specific information such as proposed improvements and activities that the assessments will fund, their costs, as well as any changes to the district's boundaries, or the assessment schedule. So, that annual report here is attached to your agenda packet this evening. So, for highlights, the annual report includes day-to-day duties, along with some highlights from last year, as you can see on the slide here. And then looking forward for this upcoming year, HB Downtown will continue to explore opportunities to provide a cleaner, safer, and more inviting district, especially during special events and peak season. In addition to the Surf City Artisan Fair and Surf City Nights, they'll host events, improve marketing and communication, provide holiday beautification, and enhance security and cleaning. So, you can see here in red, the assessment funds, which are distinct and separate from the funds of the entire nonprofit organization. And this is the portion of the budget that council has oversight in its allocation. This year, assessments are projected to be consistent with past years and account for only 12% of HB Downtown's income. Other funding sources from the organization come from events, as well as from an agreement with the city to oversee downtown cleaning operations. Here's the breakdown of expenses for the entire organization. However, only a portion of these expenses are actually funded by the assessments. And here are the recommendations from the advisory board on how to allocate the assessment funds. They're proposing a breakdown, 30% to the Security Ambassador Program, 20% to the executive director's salary for her management, 15% to enhanced maintenance, 15% to holiday beautification, 15% to marketing and events, and 5% to a CRM software program. In September, council initiated the renewal process and adopted a resolution of attention to levy the annual assessment and scheduled this evening's public hearing. With that, notices were sent to all affected businesses within the district area regarding tonight's public hearing date, information about the assessment, and instructions if they wish to oppose the assessment. So, the purpose of this evening's public hearing is to receive and consider any protests against the assessment for the upcoming year. If written protests are received from owners totaling 50% or more of the assessment value, then no further proceedings to continue the district can be considered for a period of one year. So, at this point, we've received protests from 21 out of the 257 businesses in the district. 17 protests were validated, which totals 9.1% of the projected assessment amount. If we include the additional four protests, which could not be validated as being signed by the owner or the designated agent of that business, that would increase the total percentage to approximately 12%, which is still well below the 50% threshold. So, staff recommends that council conduct the public hearing, and if written protests totaling 50% or more of the proposed assessment value are not received, adopt Resolution 2023-38, approving the annual assessment for the district. If approved, business assessments will be collected by the city and then passed through to downtown HB to allocate accordingly. Thank you. That concludes my staff report. Staff is available to answer any questions. And Jamie Strong, Executive Director of HB Downtown, is here as well.
Thank you so much. City Clerk, is now the time to open up the public hearing?
If there are no questions, yes, I think we can.
So, first, questions from the council members. Any questions?
Yeah, I have some.
Councilman McKeon?
Sure.
All right, so I'm looking at the budget. Uh, '22 to '23, '23 to '24, and the biggest variance that stands out is the negative 42,000 for the Surf City Artisan Affair from '22 to '23, '23 to '24. Can you guys explain why that is?
I believe that the cost for the Artisan Fair, the staff was absorbed, um, so they had additional line items, uh, for staff, and then that, uh, was then factored in as, as being reduced cost, because they've added some support staff, um, for, uh, Surf City Artisan Fair operator and Surf City Artisan Fair support staff as additional line items. But I'm also happy to bring up, uh, Jamie Strong, um, to answer any.
Sure. And then how many vendors do you guys currently have?
So that contract is overseen by Community Services, so I'd have to defer to, to, to them.
So, can someone answer that question?
I don't have that information today, but I'm happy to provide it.
Jamie, do you know? Okay.
Jamie, if you could just take the, the mic right here. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thanks for being here. By the way, happy birthday.
Thank you. It does vary, um, about the number of vendors. There's a maximum of 45, and depending on the time of year, this, we've just come here off of the summertime, we have been max, an average of about 35 to 40, but it does, can go up to 45. Labor Day weekend was maxed out on all four days.
Yeah, the reason I bring it up is this one jumps off the page on the, you know, negative 42,000. That's the biggest decrease year over year, so I'm trying to understand why. You said the average is about 35 vendors?
Mm-hmm.
Reason I bring it up is, um, the person that ran this before for 30-plus years happened to be my mother, and she averaged, she had 57, uh, vendors with a waitlist, and had space for 57, so I'm curious why the numbers dropped by over 22 vendors. What's changed from when it was running at 57 with the waitlist to now we're averaging 35?
The map that was approved, that, with the city, was 45, so I'm not sure of the map that was done before, um, at the previous operator. We do have, again, like I said, it's changed, there has been a few things that have affected those numbers. During November and December of last year, we were moved into the, um, parking lot, so we did actually lose some of those dates, because we could not maximize the number to 45 to 50 that we could put in that parking lot area, um, and that was due to the ice skating rink. So there, we have relooked at the calendar each year, it was our first year of operating, and there has been reallocation of dates, space, and what, now that we don't know that we're not having the, um, uh, ice skating rink, that we will be utilizing that space differently, um, for November and December.
Well, you know, I'm looking at the businesses that protested. I have, you know, 22 is what I counted, but obviously they're not excited about paying more fees, so, again, to me, this seems like the place where we can potentially add more revenue. We have space for 45. The, the previous operator had 57 with a waitlist, so we're not optimizing even what we can, which is 45, so how do we, how do we remedy that situation?
And, and we definitely can take a look at it, and I can relook at, um, the, I just redid the budget for this year, but I'm happy to look at that. I will also be happy to pull, um, maps from before to see what that variance is, and why there is such a difference in what was approved to what was there before, if there's different spacing, or there, or something that, that we just didn't know about.
It could be operational too, right? Because you have space for 45, you're saying, oh, you're averaging 35, so.
Right.
We have another 10 that we're not, you know, capped at, or we're not, you know, maximizing, or before there was 57 with a waitlist, so there's people, you know, climbing to get in.
And I would say during the summer, I should have said that correctly, we're averaging 40 during that peak season. It does go down a little bit during the off-season. We hope to pick back up this November and December, now that we're gonna be in that space for the holiday season.
Sure. But it should be 100% capacity with, you know, with the waitlist, and like I said, this is the biggest delta, this 42,000, so, to me, that jumped off the page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll definitely take a look at it.
Thanks.
Any other, um, discussion from council members? Seeing none now?
I can go ahead. I mean, I have a script. I don't have anyone signed up to speak.
Okay.
So.
Do I need to read the?
You can go ahead and open the public hearing.
Yeah, we're, we're now ready to open the public hearing for, uh, the renewal of the Downtown Business Improvement District. I'll hit the gavel to say that. City clerk, you say you have no one to speak?
I don't. Um, so I just want to say if written protests are received from the owners of businesses in the district, which will pay 50% or more of assessments proposed to be levied, note that further proceedings to renew the district or to levy the proposed assessment shall be taken for a period of one year from this date. If the majority protest is only against a specified or type or types of improvements or activities with the, within the area, those improvements or activities shall be eliminated. I have no one signed up, so. Would anyone like to come down?
Seeing none.
I guess you can close it.
And, okay, so we'll close the public hearing. And, um, I will call for a motion. Right?
Well, I have some information to report.
Okay.
Okay. Says if the, if the protests total less than 50% of the total assessment amount, the City Council can approve the renewal of the district. If more than 50% of the total assessment is protested, the City Council cannot renew the district or consider it further for one year. The percentage of assessments protested is 9.1%, or $9,594 of the $115,245 projected assessment amount. We received protests from 21 businesses, and there was one duplicate of the 257 businesses in the district. However, four protests totaling $2,808 could not be valid, validated as being signed by the owner or designated agent of the entity. If included, that would increase the total percentage of protest to 12.1%.
Okay, so, um, I'll, I'll move that we approve the annual assessment within the Huntington Beach Downtown bid for fiscal year 2023-24.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick's out of the room. Councilmember Mosher?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Vandermark?
Yes.
Mayor Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember McKeon?
No.
Councilmember Bolton?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
It's 5-1-1 with Councilmember McKeon voting no, and Councilmember Calmick out of the room.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Calmick, I know you probably hear me. You can come back. Councilman, okay, councilman, we're now in the rest of the council, we're going to agenda item 14. Staff, please introduce your report.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, um, over the past five or six months, as you well know, we've been working with you to develop, uh, your strategic plan that will be implemented over the next four years. We've invested a lot of effort collectively, both on the, the, uh, the leadership side, yourselves and the, uh, city team, to, uh, put together a thoughtful process, and ultimately to capture your priorities and put together your strategies and the means to implement, um, the plan. Uh, as you also know, um, we, uh, worked with Baker Tilly and Carol Jacobs, and what will, and her team, and what will happen this evening, as we're planning on presenting for about 10 minutes, it might take a couple minutes more. Carol will walk us through the process, then, um, I'll say a couple more words, and then hand it off to Travis to, uh, go through the meat of the strategic plan, and then I'll wrap it up at the end and seek your comments and questions. So Carol Jacobs, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Al. Good, good afternoon, uh, mayor and council. My name's Carol Jacobs, Managing Director at Baker Tilly. Thank you for allowing us to be here and participate in your strategic planning process. As Al said, we started this process, this process about seven months ago, and that process started with interviews with all of the council members, all of your charter officers, as well, um, as, as many of your staff people. In April, we did what we call an environmental scan, where we learn, uh, everything we can about Huntington Beach. Your demographics, your, uh, property tax, your finances, everything we can, everything we can learn, and we learned that through, um, through your department heads and your executive leadership team, who provided us with a wealth of information, so we can get to understand you as a council and as a community, and make sure that we are, um, putting forward, uh, issues that are important to you. Uh, we met with the department heads in May. You have, um, I've worked with a lot of staffs. You have an amazing executive leadership team, and you should be very proud of them. They work very hard, and they're very proud of the work that they do for the city of Huntington Beach. Um, in May, we asked the department heads to do some work for us, and they looked at their budgets and their programs, and they, they identified for us where the gaps were, where the things were that they were working on that they didn't, they didn't quite have all the resources or all the direction that they needed, so they provided that to us as well. And really, what that does is that leads us to our council workshop, which, um, thank you all for being there, first of all, and, uh, your collaboration, and your willingness to participate. We got a little frowns in the beginning of the day, but I think, uh, I think by the end of the day, um, most of you, uh, participated and enthusiastically with each other, and you were collaborative, and you were consensus-building, and that's what makes a great strategic plan. And I could tell that you all feel deeply about the community, and this strategic plan reflects your goals and strategies for the next, um, five years, four years. And there you are. What a nice group. But why do we do strategic planning? What, what is kind of the point of it? It helps your city manager, your city council, and your staff all get on the same page. You are, some of you are pretty new council members. You don't get an opportunity to have in-depth conversations with each other because of the Brown Act, so this is a chance for you to get to know each other, to get to understand what the, what the goals for the organization should be. It puts you all on the same page, gives you all a common purpose. It'll, and this is very important, it aligns your resources with your objectives. You can't do anything unless you know where the money is coming from. So you want to lay out your objectives and then your resources to go along with that. And it's not just the council that runs the organization, or the city manager, or the city attorney, it's, it's your executive leadership team, and it's every employee that you have. And this strategic plan will lay out for everyone what's your strategic goals for the next four years, and now it's in a document, and you will be able to share that with the staff and the community, and you'll be able to move this organization forward in the way that you see fit. One of the things that we talked about as part of the strategic planning process was the big rock theory, and this is really an important productivity and priority theory. And what it says is if you have a jar, you put the most important things, the big rocks, in the jar first, and then you put the pebbles in the jar second. They're not as, they're important, but they're not as important as the big rocks. And then you put the sand in, and the sand is, eh, we gotta get to it at some point. And then you put the water in, and the water is unimportant completely. Every time you make a change to your, to your strategic plan, you need to think about the big rock. Are you taking out a little pebble? Are you taking out a piece of sand? Or are you taking out of, out of big rock? You can't take out a pebble and put in a big rock and expect the staff to continue to be able to do all of the things that they need to do on a daily basis. So this is a living document. Um, we do expect that things will come up, and you'll want to change it, and your directions may shift, but as they shift, you have to remember that this is a four-year plan, and and those priorities, the big rocks come out, the big rocks can go in. You can't just put more big rocks in and expect everything to get done. And one of the, one of the reasons for the big rock theory is, this is how your staff spends their time. 85% of their time is just getting through the day, making sure that all of the, um, constituents' needs are met, to making sure that the trees are getting trimmed, and the, and the asphalt, and the roads are getting asphalted, and all those things that they do, um, on a day-to-day basis. That's 85% of their time. You have a strategic plan on top of that normal activity. And so when we're talking about strategic priorities and big rocks, we have to remember that 85% of their time is already eaten up. And so they're gonna spend about 5% of this time on this four-year plan. So want you just to keep that in mind as, as we, as you think and consider this plan as to how you're going to do that. This was, this was, this was the day, um, and I wanted to share this with you. We gathered all of our information, um, and we developed kind of a list of what we heard from everybody we had talked to, from our environmental scan. After we listened to everybody, there were some very, very common themes that we heard from all of you and from the executive team. And we placed those, those priorities in front of you for your consideration. And throughout the day, we had a number of discussions, and we talked about what is your priorities? Do these things make sense to you? And you kind of massaged them, and you told us about them, and you told us, you know, in public safety, what are the most important priorities in public safety, and what are those things that you're looking to accomplish? And so that's how we came up with the strategic plan. And at this point, I want to send it back to Al for, um, going over what you actually decided as far as what your, what your strategic goals are going to be.
Thank you, Carol. Next slide, please. Uh, mayor and council, um, this, uh, opportunity that, that, uh, that you created through the strategic plan is something that, uh, the, the entire city team's pretty excited about. You've helped define what matters most, and we are then able to prioritize, as, as Carol said, the resources we have available to get, get things done that are important to you, and that are important to the quality of life of the residents of Huntington Beach. The other dimension of this is that, um, you conveyed to us the importance of accountability and, and communicating transparently with the community. So as you know, and you'll hear more about, this strategic plan is premised on twice a year coming back in front of you, uh, with progress reports and receiving any comments you have about, uh, changes that are needed. So we are going to continue to communicate with you and the public about the strategic plan. Next slide. The overall framework for this is kind of top to bottom, um, uh, in organization, where the first two items, um, are kind of the mindset between the service vision of the city and the one HB principles. Uh, it's the mindset of, of your team that works for you each and every day. You've then, when you go down that pyramid, the goals you identified very clearly, the eight priority goals that are important to you. There's generalized statements of success for each of those goals, and then we get down into the nuts and bolts of the work plan through the strategies that you identified were most important out of the 40-some strategies. I think you identified around 23 that would be pertinent to achieving your goals. And then we got down into the weeds in, um, in the implementation action plan to carry out your strategies. And with that, I'm gonna hand the rest of it off to Travis.
Thank you, Al. And thank you, mayor and city council. Thank you for going through this process, um, over the past three, four months. Definitely as the executive leadership team and the deputy, um, leadership team, it was a, a great experience, and we appreciate all the input you put in. And so I have the opportunity tonight to talk about the, um, overreaching goals, um, that was prepared and identified, um, through this process. Um, we have eight of these goals, as shown here, and one thing I'd like to point out is, um, there's eight goals, they're not in priority order, they're all important, um, so I just wanted to stress that, um, each of these are important for our city and our organization. Within each of these, um, goals, there are an additional 23 strategies that were identified as the highest priority action items, um, for the city in this, um, strategic plan. And these items were developed, um, with the city council, and meeting one of these three criterias, which including, included receiving, um, four or more votes, um, by city council at the, um, June 8th Strategic Planning Meeting held, um, that was a publicly held meeting. The second item is it was a pre-approved, um, by, if, if they were pre-approved by city council and currently underway, or there were items that face, um, time constraints or required immediate action. The first, um, the first, uh, goal is economic development. That goal has one strategy, um, and, um, to support greater business retention, investment, and job growth, uh, growth in Huntington Beach. Number two is the fiscal sustainability goal, and it has a, one strategy with the goal to provide funding, support, high-quality level of programming and services, capital improvements. and services, capital improvements, and, and develop a structural budget surplus. The third goal is a high-performing organization. And it, and this goal has seven strategies to develop an engaged workforce that's committed to responsive and exceptional public service for all. And this is, and our, and as we develop our satisfaction surveys, our goal is to receive a ninety percent or higher rating. The fourth goal is homelessness. And homelessness has two strategies. And this is to support the continuum, continuum of care to reduce homelessness and then maintain the quality of life for all of our residents within our city. Number five is the housing goal. This has one strategy to, to develop a proactive programs to address diverse housing needs within the city of Huntington Beach. Number six is the infrastructure investment goal, which has four key strategies to provide, maintain, and upgrade infrastructure, supporting the community and our day-to-day life. The seventh goal is public engagement, which has five key strategies to develop a community that has easy, easy access to clear, accurate, and timely city information and to increase community involvement in city activities. And the eighth goal is public safety. Public safety goal has two strategic, two strategies, key strategies, to ensure safety and protection of all community members both efficiently and effectively. Along with the, with the strategic plan, there is an accompanying document, the implementation action plan. And this plan is prepared to provide the detail, the roadmap for staff, and it lays out the twenty-three major strategies and steps required to implement each of those goals over the next four years. As shown in this example, each of these strategies is broken down into success indicators, strategies, key tasks and deliverables, identification of lead department and staff required to perform the functions, required financial and staffing resources, and a projected timeline for completion. One thing additionally I'd like to point out is we had, there were many more strategies that were identified through this whole process and discussed by council during the strategic planning session. And within the, within the implementation action plan, the last, I think, page twelve through fourteen, has eighteen other strategies that weren't prioritized as high as the twenty-three we just discussed. And they've been placed on a secondary spreadsheet. These are considered the small rocks. So the big rocks were the first twenty-three we talked about within the strategic plan, but we have these eighteen other small rocks that will, that will be completed as there's opportunity when higher tasks, higher priorities get, are completed and/or when other resources become available. And with that, I would like to hand it back off to our city manager, Al Zalink, to discuss the next steps.
Thank you, Travis. And just one other comment. That last two or four pages that Travis talked about, the small rocks, those will come forward only if the council directs that they come forward. Those are in just kind of like a holding zone, if you will, for the future. Transparency and accountability is very important to this council and to the strategic plan, as I mentioned. We'll come back twice a year with reports to the city council. We will also have a dedicated page on the city's website for the strategic plan. And then as you, you direct us and guide us when we come back for updates, if we need to reconvene on an annual basis or every other year basis to have a check-in on the strategic plan, freshen it up, we will, we will ask that question of you and absolutely follow that lead. Before I move on from this to the recommendation slide, I do want to thank you, mayor and council. Your leadership during this process has been great. Your patience has been even greater. So thank you for that. Also want to thank the charter officers, the city attorneys, city clerks, city treasurer for leaning in on, on this effort. The executive leadership team, the deputy leadership team, been phenomenal. The city manager's office team has, every single one of them has done just a great job pitching in on this effort. Catherine Jun, I think we can all say, she really deserves a huge kudos from all of us because she put her heart and soul into this effort on behalf of all of us. And of course, Bicker Tilly and Carol Jacobs and your team did a great job. And I think we were all very pleased with the outcomes of your work. So with that, mayor, I'll hand it off to you and the recommendation is on the next slide. Travis, if you want.
Thank you. Discussion among members?
I'll just make the motion to receive as recommended.
Go ahead, councilman. I'll second that, by the way.
Okay. Thank you, city manager and all the staff for all the work that you did. Obviously, a lot of work went into this. With respect to success metrics or success indicators, I just want to express a personal desire that as we develop those, we have as many concrete and objective metrics as possible. So for example, if you go back to slide number twelve, for high-performing organization, I think it says we will assess whether the workforce is engaged. And I, you know, I have a question. So how will we do that? Will it be solely based on customer service surveys or will we do something else like have employee engagement surveys? So I don't know if you're ready to respond to that.
Well, no, I, I think that's, it's a very important point that we've been talking about as a team. As we go through the implementation action plan, we're going to be developing the KPIs or other metrics and the means to arrive at those metrics. And we're, I think we were debating about, should we try and get metrics for this or not? And we ultimately decided that we're going to have to do that kind of as we go, just because of capacity. But to like employee engagement survey is something that's a, a key priority of this workforce. And so that's going to be one of the tools that comes forward to help us measure over time longitudinally how this workforce of ours is doing. So it can be very objective.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Sure.
Council.
Appreciate everything that the staff and everybody that's been mentioned has done. I know it's challenging. It's, it's noted that we have a very divided council and city. And I think the staff did everything in their power on the day of the strategic planning session to really try to bring everybody together, to have cohesive conversation, to be able to come forward with a strategic plan that we could agree on. And I appreciate that effort. You know, looking at kind of as council member Bolton had talked about, the success indicators and wanting to have, you know, some really solid strategies in there too. I think one that I look at, which I know is probably a very hard needle to thread with this council is housing. And I just wanted to note this one. So success, success indicator, I completely support proactive programs to address diverse housing needs within the city's jurisdiction. But I think it's important to note that the one strategy that's on here is to take action to maintain local control of land use planning, which is not, in my mind, a proactive program to address diverse housing needs within the city's jurisdiction. One thing that one of the commenters mentioned earlier was if you want to retain local control, pass the housing element. So it concerns me that we don't have the housing element anywhere, even on the small rock strategies. And I think that it should be there for goal number five. I do see pursue opportunities to develop affordable housing through the use of low and moderate income housing asset funds, assist residents with maintaining homeownerships, and explore options for housing voucher programs to support housing affordability. It just, I understand that this council has concerns with the housing element requirements as far as arena. But I think that to retain local control, which is the objective here per the success, well, per the strategy, having a housing element that's certified would actually meet that success indicator and address diverse housing needs within the city's jurisdiction. So I would just recommend that we add that as, I guess, a small rock strategy, though I think it's probably should be the main strategy, just as something that, because it was, was talked about that these other ones are, would only come forward if the council wanted to bring them forward. So I think it's reasonable to have it here kind of on the side. And the council can always decide whether or not to bring it forward. Having it here wouldn't necessarily say it was going to proceed. But I, I think it's important to note that that is the way that we retain local control. And I think it should at least be in the toolkit to, to move the success indicator forward.
I would like to address the city manager. You put in all these rocks and the sand based on a majority of the council being supportive of those rocks or sand, correct?
Yeah, so at the...
But we didn't have four votes for what the councilwoman was talking about.
There were four straw votes.
Right.
Yeah, for the items that are in here.
Yeah, okay.
Sure. I just still think it's important to note that. But, thank you. And then the other thing I appreciate seeing there is the pie chart of the day-to-day activities and, you know, how, when we put the big rocks in first, it kind of reveals, I think, the values and priorities of the council and they're here in our strategic plan. And I'm glad that there's a resolution included within this so that hopefully it will help keep us focused on what we're working on. Because if the staff is already on the day-to-day doing, you know, eighty-five percent of their time is taken up with day-to-day activities of running the city, if we keep loading more and more rocks and ultimately we're going to bury the staff and stop the day-to-day activities of the city from happening. So it's important. There are always a lot of things that come up that we want to do, but we can't do everything. So I just appreciate that that's mentioned there. So it can help all of us, you know, including myself, to realize that we have, you know, a, we don't have all of the resources that we might want to have and that we have to limit ourselves. So just thank you for kind of bringing that into context. Thanks.
Any other discussion?
I just have clarification on the motion. Councilmember, your motion was to receive and file, but the recommended action is to adopt the resolution. Was that your intent? To adopt the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll second that motion.
Right. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cal McMoher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McCann?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
And again, thanks, everybody, staff, and everybody that worked on this. So now, members, we work on, go to file line fifteen. Staff, please introduce your report.
Mayor Strickland, members of the council, on September 5th, Mayor Pro Tem Vandermark presented to the city council, a city manager item, or city council member item, which the council approved to declare through a resolution that the city declared Huntington Beach a no mask and no vaccine mandated city. The resolution, which is attached to your report, is Resolution 2023-48, and it declares that mask and vaccine mandates are banned within the city jurisdiction and recognizes exceptions exist for those who test positive for COVID-19. The resolution also declares individuals retain the right to mask and vaccinate and businesses retain the right to impose masks and proof of vaccine requirements. Lastly, the resolution indicates presently there's no competing authority by the state of California and the county of Orange related to max, mask and vaccines. I will now hand off the presentation to the mayor pro tem, because I believe she wanted to make some comments.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, I'll be short. So yeah, this is, this resolution is in response to 2020 and how the state handled the pandemic. They did deny the citizens of their individual liberties, including how to take care of yourself. Business owners were not allowed to open unless they did, they asked for vaccine cards or forced masks onto people. That's not the country that we live in. And I believe as the city, we need to stand up for our residents and our businesses, which is why I found it necessary to bring forward this resolution declaring Huntington Beach a no mask and no max, vaccine mandated city. One of the main criticisms I hear is that there are currently, currently no mandates, and that is correct. Right now, we do not have any competing authorities. However, the media has already been covering stories about possible return of mask mandates. Schools have already canceled sporting events, discussed school closures, and masking for students as well. So this resolution is a preemptive measure to protect our citizens from suffering through the same abuses of power they had to endure as a result of the draconian and tyrannical measures imposed by the state of California. Our police and our fire chiefs should have sole discretion as of to whether our fire and our police are to wear masks, but I don't believe they should be forced to get vaccinated for COVID-19. And that is included in this resolution. And that's where I'm at.
Discussion, members. Seeing that, or no? Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution is, I think, uses a term that I really don't like to use, but it's virtue signaling. And I remember for the last two years prior to the election, consistently accused of that. This has so many exemptions in it that it's like Bob in accounting is the only guy that gets to wear a mask. Fire chief, police chief, it does not affect anything that ever happened. And it's, it's effectively, I think, tilting its shadows here in order to signal to folks that we're going to have a resolution that doesn't actually accomplish anything and in fact likely makes the city, puts the city in a more precarious position with regard to public health. Yeah, I appreciate staff threading the needle on this and putting together an ordinance that I think says things. But overall, I think that the, the point of this, I think, will not achieve really anything other than to have a piece of paper that's three pages long sitting in the city resolution somewhere. And this will, I believe, go into some sort of archive at some point as a failure in public policy.
Counsel.
Thank you, mayor. I do think this was a tough assignment for the staff and I appreciate the work that you did. I think it's a tough assignment because that's what happens when we get way out of our lane. Couple of things about this. So some of the assertions are just incorrect. So in the third paragraph, it says, "The state, county, and local governments deprive people of their freedom to choose how to handle their own health and responses to health concerns. To my knowledge, every person decided on their own whether to get vaccinated or not, or whether to wear a mask or not, and no state, county, or local government hunted people down and forced them to do anything." In the fourth, whereas, that's also incorrect, it says, "The government responses to COVID disrupted more than a century of Huntington Beach's embrace and exercise of individual freedoms, including but not limited to moving freely through the city and making their own personal health decisions." So I was curious about how the city had handled previous pandemics. So I asked the city archivist, Kathy Shea, if she had any records or if she'd ever seen any documents that described what had happened in times past. And so she found some information and sent it to me. And so I read through all of it. And as I anticipated, COVID was far from the first pandemic that this area ever experienced. There were multiple events in the early to mid 1900s dealing with scarlet fever, meningitis, and polio. In each one of those occasions, we could say considerable hardship was caused to residents and businesses and people's ability to move about the city was restricted. Specific examples, in 1918 with the so-called Spanish flu, local schools, churches, and other gathering spots were closed. When schools reopened in November of 1918, kids had to have a physician's certificate... Specific examples, in 1918 with the so-called Spanish flu, local schools, churches, and other gathering spots were closed. When schools reopened in November of 1918, kids had to have a physician's certificate in order to return to in-person school. The 1930s and 1940s brought epidemics of scarlet fever, meningitis, and polio. Quarantine was the mandated, was mandated by public health authorities for all of these, usually quarantine of residents in their homes. There is one prominent case in 1935 of a child being removed from her home and taken to the hospital by authorities to protect her siblings from getting polio from her. And as the spread of diseases like polio grew more critical in the 30s and 40s, so-called contagious disease wards grew very quickly. It's important to know your history, right? So our history shows that there is no century-plus legacy of unfettered freedom to move about the city in times of pandemic. Instead, public spaces were closed, just like during COVID. And even more restrictive, kids couldn't go back to school without a doctor's certificate, and a child might even be removed from their home to protect their siblings. All of these considerable hardships. And in case you're curious about what the city government did back during that time, from what I read, it did the same thing as it did during COVID. The city stayed in its lane, did not freak out and get into the business of making public health proclamations. Back in the, back during the time of these prior pandemics, interestingly enough, it was the city clerk's job to coordinate disease and death reports for the county health officer. I thought that was pretty interesting. And the library, God bless the library, took the initiative to learn and educate the public about disease vectors. So please remember, in 2020 and 2021, the city did not impose any general mask or vaccine mandates on businesses or residents. The city followed state and county health public guidelines, just like any responsible employer or operator of public spaces. The refutation of the science when it comes to masks and vaccines, again, I've just, we're talking about a retrospective analysis showing that the government response was not convincingly or compellingly supported by medical or scientific evidence. What analysis? By whom? Is that analysis credible? In what context did it appear? With the failure to provide any context, the council can't show that there's a rational basis for making this statement. It, it just seems random, and as such, it's not to be taken seriously. Then we come to internal inconsistency. You know, and, and I have a question. So the seventh whereas paragraph says, "Individuals not directly at risk of direct exposure should have a right to choose whether to wear a mask, et cetera." So who are these people? Who's not directly at risk of direct exposure? Can anybody tell me? So it can't be somebody with a school-aged kid. I have school-aged kids. They bring a new cold or virus home every week. Is it teachers, healthcare workers, retail workers, restaurant workers? What about people like us who are, who come into contact with lots of people, members of the public? We could easily be in contact with someone who has COVID and they don't know it, just like in this meeting room right now with all of these people here. So it's, are we not entitled then? Because it says, "Individuals not directly at risk of direct exposure should have the right to choose." So as I read that, that means we don't have the right to choose and that we have to wear a mask or be vaccinated. Again, you know, moving on to the resolution paragraphs, the second paragraph says, "There is an exception, though, to this no mask, no vaccine mandate mandate for people who have tested positive for COVID." So if you've tested positive, that means you also don't get to choose whether you wear a mask or get vaccinated. Is that right? And then this presumes that the science supporting masks and vaccines is credible. Otherwise, why would we bother telling people who've been exposed or who are COVID-positive that they have to wear a mask? So internally inconsistent. There's another exception here citing Cal OSHA recommendations, recommendations for city employees. Well, why aren't we telling city employees they have the freedom not to wear a mask? It's kind of like saying you don't have to follow state law, right, when you're in Huntington Beach, like what we did with housing? Why aren't we following the same principle? Do we, do we follow state law or do we not follow state law? That just seems like, you know, we're operating without any fundamental, fundamental principle at all. That makes government unpredictable, untrustworthy, and chaotic, and, you know, it's just not something that we should be doing. Let's see. The resolution essentially says, "No masks or no vaccine mandate mandates, except where there are some." And I can't imagine signing on to something that contains explicit factual inaccuracies, internal inconsistencies, and within the four corners of the document, it has no meaning beyond simple-minded incantations about freedom. Actions like this demean the office of city council, and they degrade the statements that the city of Huntington Beach as a government entity makes, and I don't think we should do this. Thank you.
So I would like to talk, there were mandates from the federal state and county that came down on our people here in Huntington Beach. When we talk about healthcare, when we're government officials, we have to look at the whole economy and the whole, what it does to the whole macro system, and that's what we get elected to do. I want to thank the Mayor Protam for bringing this forward. Many restaurant and entrepreneurs lost their life savings during the COVID. Many children lost lifetime memories that they would have otherwise had. We had probably one of the worst economies by shutting down this economy, which the state had then deep, deep deficits. And where did they make their cuts? They made their cuts in healthcare funding because public safety and education were protected. And so when we have deep cuts in the state, they were deeply cut in healthcare funding that actually probably hurt more people in healthcare than the mandates would have. And I want to thank again the Protam because it makes a statement that Huntington Beach will not stand by and will stand against the mistakes of the past. And the shutdown were a mistake of the past, and I commend Mayor Protam for bringing this forward as a resolution that says, "We, as Huntington Beach, acknowledge it was a mistake in the past, and we don't want that to happen in the future." So with that, I second the motion. Any other discussion? Go ahead, Councilman.
I think that this is purely political theater and a signal to, it's like a bat signal, to certain parts of alleged news media to come and cover this. You've seen it since it originally got brought up. I think it's interesting that the mayor talked about the macro level and how the economy was impacted, how some young people lost memories they could have made. I think if we take it down to a micro level, people lost their lives. People that I know lost parents, relatives, friends, people on this dais lost friends. And I think that what's really important here with this resolution, I do think that Councilmember Bolton made a good point, that it's really demeaning to the city and the policy that we make on a regular basis, and I appreciate all of her commentary on this tonight. But I think what's important is for residents and businesses, hospitals, schools, medical facilities to realize is nothing in this resolution will impact you because you're all exempted. You can make your own decision, decision, your own choice. You can continue to retain the right to mask or vaccinate, just like before tonight. We have no purview over our schools. We have no purview over the hospitals or medical facilities. As you can see in this, our city itself, which we do have purview over as far as capital C city, basically has to still follow all of the Cal OSHA requirements. So, I mean, we can, as a majority, pass this resolution, but it effectively is a signal that is empty and does nothing other than call out to others to say, "Look at us. This is how we want to lead." Thank you.
All right. You want, go ahead, Mayor Protam.
I agree, many people died from COVID. However, many more died from depression, suicide, because they were not allowed to earn a living. They were not allowed to see their families. Elderly people died alone in homes because there was nobody there to, nobody there to care for them. People lost their businesses and then committed suicide. Hawaii actually had more deaths from suicide than they did from COVID. So we can't just think of one category and forget about everybody else.
All right. Madam Clerk, it's been moved, it's been seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Nay.
Mosher?
Nay.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Aye.
Passes 4-3.
All right, thank you. Members, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Move and second. We're adjourned. A special meeting of the Huntington Beach City Council Public Finance Authority will be held on Thursday, October 5th, 2023. The next regular scheduled meeting of the Huntington Beach City Council Public Finance